I'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order, and we'll begin this evening with considering approval of the Plan Commission meeting minutes of December 11th, 2017.
With approval.
So, motion by Truel.
Second.
Second by Kerchma. Are there any comments or suggestions for changes? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Council Representative report, all the person Truel.
Thank you, Honored. Really, the only item that went to council was the True Hotel for a first reading. We'll actually be taking it up tomorrow night. I guess it wasn't even the first reading. It went to, I think that was the only item that really...
It'll go to council tomorrow.
It'll go to council tomorrow evening, but I don't think there's anything else. So, we only had one meeting this month, in the month of December, so...
Correct.
Thank you. And the status of current developments, Planning Director Shiel.
The typical report is in the packet, but I thought it was noteworthy to talk about some of the new construction levels. The year-to-date numbers were in here, and I thought one that was worth highlighting was the value amount of the residential construction has increased from $7.5 million last year to about 12.2 million this, in 2017. So, '16 to '17. Also, just the raw numbers of single-family homes went from 20 in 2016 to 30 last year. So, I think you're continuing to see a strong interest in the residential aspect of it. You'll also see the commercial level has remained quite strong with similar dollar values of improvements made in '16 and '17 for commercial activity.
Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding that report? It's all in your packet to review at your leisure. Agenda item number five is a request by Ronald Ferseth for a Certified Survey Map, or CSM, approval to split the property at 1035 Sunt Lane to create two residential lots, Lot 1 and Lot 3, while leaving the remaining neighborhood business lot on Lot 2. Planning Director Shiel.
Just a quick overview on the screen is the graphic that depicts the area. The existing commercial building is yet to remain in Lot 2. There's an existing house that's planned to remain on Lot 3, and a new residential parcel would be created in Lot 1. So ultimately, the CSM creates the three lots. The subsequent action to rezonate would allow for these to be rezoned to allow for single-family residences on those two parcels.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from our commissioners? I must call you all older persons. Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks. Rodney, if you, what's the, what's the current zoning? And then, the house right now, is that occupied as a residence?
Can't speak to occupied. Is it occupied right now? Ron can tell us.
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Ron Ferseth, fellas. I own the property there, and my daughter's living in the 130-year-old house that's on the lot, and she hopes to build a new home on Lot 1. So, that's why I'm here. I can go back to 1954 if it's necessary, but if you don't have any questions, why...
Sounds good. Thank you.
Very nice.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have a question. So then, will the first property then become a rental property where your daughter lives now?
Yes.
There will be a public hearing as part of the rezoning on a subsequent item here on the agenda.
Yep. Thank you. Any further questions from our commissioners regarding the CSM? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Bartlett, second by Truel. Without any further comments, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries.
Thank you.
So then, we'll move right into the request by Ron Ferseth to rezone property at 1035 Sunt Lane, which is the CSM for lots 1 and 3, from NB, Neighborhood Business, to SR4, Single Family Residential. And we'll move into a public hearing. So I'll close the meeting and open a public hearing. And that's where you folks, if you had any other questions or would like to speak to the commission? No? Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, come on up to the podium, please. And then, if you just state your name and address.
I just live right across the street from there.
Okay.
So if I...
I'm sorry. Your name and address, please.
Kim Wantorf, 1024 Sunt Lane. So if I understand this correctly, so say that down the line, the second property right there, the lot 2, that's zoned business now, so say that their retiree decided not to have that be business anymore, then will it go back again? Will we later on vote on whether that, that's going to be a residential then?
Currently, this is, this is already zoned business to accommodate the use there.
Correct.
And so that would remain the neighborhood business unless it was an action in the future to reconsider to be something else.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Further comments or questions?
Move for approval.
If not, oh, I'll close the public hearing. That's all right.
It's okay.
That's okay. That's what I was going to, next, recommendation to council. I heard a motion from Hannah.
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Second.
And a second by Truel. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There's a request by Louis and Dolores Huntington for a planned development, general development plan approval for expansion of a deck at 565 Kensington Square. Rodney.
Some commissioners will recall Kensington Square was created as part of a planned development years ago. There were no provisions to allow for the footprints of those buildings to grow at all. This particular individual is not unlike several others in wanting to expand their decks slightly. So the request really is to allow for the expansion of the deck three feet deeper into the parcel for the width of the existing 12-foot depth. As depicted by their graphic, it'd be approximately 16 feet off the rear property line to have that occur.
Thank you, Rodney. So I'll close the meeting and open a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the meeting for the regular course of the business. Move into recommendation. Commissioner Barman.
I just have a question for, is this, the picture that was included in the packet, is this a completed deck? Because this one looks like it already has the three-foot extension on it. Is that correct?
You're correct.
Okay.
We became aware of this post-construction.
Okay.
And there's a process that we go through and educate people before. Had they come in for a permit prior to that, we would have worked with them to understand the process beforehand.
Okay. Well, I'll just go on record and say I think it seems a reasonable expansion. I mean, the deck is pretty, much harder to use at only six foot, and I think this is consistent with the pattern of the buildings and everything else, so...
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve. Second?
Second by Bartlett. Further comments or questions? Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Honored. Just question, Rodney, is this, does it fit within our guidelines?
It allows, the planned development district allows for you to create setbacks such as this. Yes.
And does this clean up, are we aware of any other additions or things out here as well?
We're not aware of any others. We've, we've let the condo association know of the process, and at one point, we even tried to encourage them to consider this on a group scale, where if there was interest by others, maybe to have a small addition onto theirs, their deck, to have it all done comprehensively as one. They've never ran with it as a group, so I think the numbers are dwindling, but this is the one that's before us right now, is the only one we're aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks, Mayor. Item 3 in the review letter says the minimum rear lot line setback, 40 feet. That is, because it's a GDP, does that not apply to the...
No.
Standard MR10?
Yeah, this is where we have to, have to kind of go through the little education, because the MR10 is what the traditional zoning class would require if it was zoned, just multifamily residential 10. We use that as a comparison so that the folks know that in the GDP, you don't have to oblige by that. You're establishing the setback requirement. You understand the difference between what it would be if it was traditional zoning. Got it.
Thank you. Right. Further comments or questions? There is, we have a motion by Barman, second by Bartlett, to approve.
You want to ask it?
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. There's a request by Kelvin, and I apologize, Marath, thank you, Kelvin Marath, for site plan approval to construct a garage addition at 320 North Street for Stoughton Area School District. Planning Director Shiel, I think, can talk us through it.
Yeah, just to give a little orientation of where this, this addition or this building is located, it's on the far east end of North Street. So their, their administration facility on North Street, actually, it's the dead-end portion of North Street. North Street essentially terminates approximately here. They already have a garage facility they're proposing to add on, an additional, I believe it's a two-stall garage. The elevation shows that it's actually, will accommodate taller vehicles as well. So this gives you an elevation view of that, is in your packet as well. So the, the western end of the facility is what's being added on to.
Very nice. Thank you. I'll answer questions from our commissioners. Commissioner Hannah.
Yeah, the, I don't want to make an assumption, but building materials are to be consistent with what's there. I did not look at it for that specifically, what they're proposing.
Hi.
Hi.
If you'd like to come on up to the, yep, there we go.
I work for the architect on this one, and yes, the, the building materials are meant to match. That was the intention.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have read the microphone for the questions. Commissioner Barman.
My question is about the landscaping. I know there was, in the, the letter follow-up, reference to the amount of points that are being achieved, and reference to where the location was, but I wasn't seeing in our packet where we were provided any kind of diagram for the location of planning, so...
It's on one of the civil sheets. It's up near the street, so there's, it makes the street more attractive. We chose to put it near the street instead of the building.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here.
It wasn't quick enough.
Further questions or comments? Motion by Truel. Was there a second by Engelberger? Without additional questions, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. A request by Ruth Single for renovation approval of a new sign within the downtown design overlay zoning district at 135 West Main Street, Suite 100.
Well, for you observant commissioners, you'll know this sign's already in place. Yeah. And you further know that there is criteria that is supposed to go through the process prior to being installed. So this is being requested post-installation. I don't know what to add.
Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Honored. Is it per ordinances? I mean, is there any exceptions here, Rodney?
Not per the dimensions or quantities or size. There's nothing related to that that is being requested as an exception. No.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Bartlett, second by Kerchma. Further questions? Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Honored. Just another question about, I mean, this is the second thing tonight that has already been completed prior to coming here for approval, and what is there to be done about this?
We try to educate everyone, and specifically, the group at the Kensington Square organization is aware of the issue. And I really don't want to discuss specifics about communications we've had, but if offline somebody would like to talk to us about that, we'd certainly be willing to do so, because we are making communications with folks that sometimes proceed with things anyhow. And we follow up on those communications, and that's, that's why they're here.
Just a specific question with regard to signs on Main Street?
Yep.
Is there a, supposedly a process that an individual does all of the signs on Main Street? Or is it, is that something I've heard in the past, but is that the case or no?
There's not an individual that's contracted to do all the signs. Years ago, there was a, a local builder that helped do a lot of the facade renovations and participated in some of the sign details for many of the businesses, but there isn't anyone...
No requirements for that?
No requirements. There's requirements related to your review and the process in the downtown overlay district, but there isn't a signed vendor that's required.
So, one other question. When, when this happens, do we just assess the permit fee and then make sure everything is proper and then bring it here? Is that what we do?
We do. Ultimately, compliance is our biggest goal, and, you know, we can certainly talk about how to be punitive and other measures, but ultimately, we're, we're trying to communicate the message early in the process so we don't get to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was going to be my question. Do we have, or might we consider as a council, some type of a fee structure where perhaps they're charged double the fee if we have to go back in this case, if it's approved? Because really, we have, you know, as Mike was basically asking those questions, I mean, things, things show up, and there ought to be some way to at least let folks know that this is not how we're supposed to be doing things. And I know in other communities that I'm fortunate enough to work in, that is the typical. You know, if we, if we were to begin a project before we get full approvals or full building permits or things, they'll charge us double the normal fees.
We had a, I'm sorry, the resolution that we have asked for in our fee structure in the past included that, where we actually did have an opportunity to charge double. That's been modified over the years. Former councils didn't feel that that was an appropriate vehicle. There may be a different council on board now.
Why don't you bring it back, there's at least maybe a couple of us that might rule and take a look at it.
Yeah. And if I could...
Sure.
You know, by not doing that, by just doing what we're doing here, it's an incentive for people not to pull permits and just do the work, and hey, if I get caught, I get caught. If I don't, I don't, you know? So I think there does need to be something punitive here.
So noted. We'll, we'll discuss that.
Yep, we can certainly bring something back. Mr. Hannah.
Yeah, to even reference something that is in our...
Application.
Yeah, our historic application. It says, you know, you can lose the property if you don't issue a permit or something like that. I mean, that goes from one extreme case to another. I know that's maybe a little different case study, but, you know, there, there's certainly precedent for having penalties in place. Some extreme and some not, but...
Thank you. So I'll go back to the request for the approval of the new sign. There's been a motion by Bartlett, second by Hannah. Further questions or comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. A request by Scott Wagner for site plan approval to construct a pergola at the Sons of Norway Mant Lodge, 317 South Page Street.
Containing your packet is material related to this request, and it would meet the standards for the district. I was just going to highlight something related to the previous conversation about that. Another way we communicate with folks early in the process is anybody that calls Digger's Hotline for anything that they do on their property, we send them information about the need, or contact them by phone to remind them of the need to get a permit. Obviously, the sign issue is different, but anything that requires you to do landscaping or digging on your property, we're following up to make sure that they're aware of the need to take out a permit in the process. So some of them may get that information, and others do some work without digging or without calling, too, but we certainly try to get the message out as soon as we can.
And the only reason you can do that is because of our utilities, so they get notified that way as well, or?
We're, we fund, we fund locates as well for our stormwater system, stormwater, electric, wastewater. All of our underground utilities have to be as part of that, so we get every, a copy of every locate in the city.
Thank you. So the pergola at Sons of Norway.
Any questions?
Commissioner Hannah.
Yeah, thanks. So this was submitted by the fire chief, right?
Yes.
Yep.
My one question would be putting, I know we're not talking about this, but putting a fire pit underneath a pergola. I'm assuming it's going to be wood.
Yeah.
So that would question that. Doesn't seem to be too diligent as far as fire safety.
He's experienced.
So...
Excuse me.
Other than that, I, I mean, I don't see an issue with it. I think it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to see an elevation since it's going in, yeah, kind of a historical recognized landmark. See if there's any sort of details to be done on, you know, overhangs or, it says no roof or sides, but, you know, it doesn't really portray any overhang or cut ends or, you know, details with it. I just kind of see this rectangle with six posts.
I think we certainly let, remind them of the fire issue.
Yeah, and maybe just follow up on, I mean, I'm fine with having it administrative, but it's a treated wood box. I don't think that'd be looked very sightly at, you know, such a nice building to have some sort of, whether it's cedar or, or whatever, I mean, stay in line with some of the architectural features on, you know, to have, you know, some continuity would be great.
It would be a big assumption to assume that they are, because the rest of the building is so nice and they've taken such good care of their property. But you're right, we'll have them. Be good to ask the question. We can ask how big of a fire they plan to make under there.
I would move for approval on the pergola, question the fire pit.
There's a motion by Hannah. Is there a second for further discussion?
Second.
Okay, second by Kerchma. Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Honored. Just, just a question. Is this actually a landmark building or no?
I don't think it's a landmark.
It's not a landmark.
It's not a landmark.
I'm asking, because if it was, then I think there'd be other conditions that would have, it would go to landmarks. Thank you.
I think they do lots of fish boils, and I'm assuming that's what the fire pits are all about. Yeah. Okay, I've got a motion by Hannah, second by Kerchma, to approve the construction of a pergola at Sons of Norway. Further comments? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Want to discuss the urban service area amendment for Arnett's addition to Norseview Heights? Planning Director Shiel.
Mr. A.G. Arnett is, is not here, but he has a representative here to give us a kind of an overview of where they're at in the process and what they plan to take forward or move forward with. And they really just wanted to get before the commission at this initial stage and get some feedback and dialogue going, so...
Welcome.
My name is Jeff Cosman. I'm here for the Arnetts. Maybe Rodney, you could highlight with your little pointer gizmo. The subdivision that Arnetts had gotten preliminary plat approval for is known as Norseview Heights. That's in the area that Rodney's highlighting. It's also marked with the dark line, that triangular space, and then connecting to B. The other day, we had met with staff and a few representatives from CARPSY, from Dane County, to take a look at and refresh the whole matter in looking at taking the previous project and incorporating it with adjacent lands to formally request an amendment to the urban, urban service area for the city of Stoughton. And it is that area in red that would be the area for amendment. In effect, it would be the grounds that Arnetts own to the northeast. They own that block to the north of B and to the east of the tracks. It also includes the municipal utility station. It incorporates also some residential properties along B and the property which is owned by the church to the south of B. Essentially, it takes the urban service area to the limits of the city limits line. It would be a little simpler to seek amendment for the entire area at this point and, in moving forward. One thing that has evolved since the original plat for Norseview Heights is that it's recognized, and certainly the sewer system out there requires a lift station, and that is preliminarily designed and intended to be located on the property across B with connection to Norseview Heights to the west and then south. I believe we're getting somewhere with approvals for boring underneath the railroad tracks for such a piece of infrastructure, and looking at this point to work with the city and move forward in applying for the urban service area amendment.
So just to further inform, there's a process in which the applicant will prepare a package of materials related to what we have to submit to the Capitol area Regional Planning Commission for review. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, City Council would approve that application. The application actually is officially submitted to CARPSY by the city of Stoughton. Particular landowners or developers can't unilaterally or individually go to them and seek approval of the extension, but they are certainly trying to fill the obligation and the responsibility that was laid out by the council when they indicated that this needed to be part of the urban service area as one of the conditions of that preliminary plat approval. So this is an initial step. It's kind of re-kickstarting this process and letting the commissioners be involved early on to know that you'll, you'll be seeing more detailed information, but if you've got any questions or comments or observations, they're certainly interested to hear from you.
Commissioner Hannah, and then Bartlett.
Thanks. Just for clarification, the red outline is all currently city-owned property?
In the city limits.
Yeah, it's in the city limits. Yeah, sorry, not owned, but city limits.
Yeah. Correct.
Commissioner Bartlett.
I just had a question about cost for that. Are the costs going to be covered by Mr. Arnett, or are the existing property owners there going to be expected to cover part of that, the church and the existing homes?
The, the lift station?
Well, the lift station, and I don't know what costs come in to bringing this into a...
The application process, the paperwork and the report and all of that that goes to CARPSY is borne by the developer. We're not expecting the, the existing properties there to pick up the tab, so to speak.
Have you communicated with them and all? I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to be brought in, but do you want to make them aware of it?
That I'm not aware of. And because they are in that envelope or that red box, it doesn't impose anything on them, though it leaves it open for them a couple of years to replace failed systems, et cetera. The lift station would be designed to pick up potential sewer...
Existing as well, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks. Just for clarification, the lift station would, would just be servicing the red outline, or would it take up some of the already developed Norseview Heights?
I think it would be essentially the, the red...
Just the red areas.
That within the red. That within the blue is already picked up somehow and served. Yes.
Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Honored. Why isn't this area in the red? Why wasn't it in the original urban service area?
Well, part of it, it wasn't, years ago, when the urban service area was created for this location, it was an area that was identified that probably wasn't going to be able to be gravity-fed, rightly so. They can see that there has to be a lift station here, so there's additional costs, and it allows for an appropriate timing to evaluate the options for service in this area and whether the community really wanted to grow with an urban service area in this area. Because it was, this urban service area that exists here now was probably created in the 80s.
And the, on the corner of the, I think it's the railroad tracks in B, is that our utilities, substation there?
No, the substations, the subst... No, the substations, substations adjacent to the tracks.
Yeah, right there, yep.
Yep, so that's the substation.
Yeah.
Yep. So, just as you indicated, even the additional properties that are contained in the urban service area are, at this point, not required to connect to public sewer and water. I mean, but they'll be designed to be able to be accommodated in this district. They may elect to become part of it and actively connect at the same time.
Where, where is the closest lift station to there?
I'm not the sanitary sewer person, but we certainly try to limit the number of lift stations. I don't think that there's a lift station on that side of the city any longer. There is one in, on the west, east side of the city in Eastwood Estates as well as Stonecrest. So, there's two of them on the east side of the city that I'm aware of, and there was one that was installed in Nordic Ridge. So, those are the lift stations that come to mind quickly.
It's just because of the elevation problems there.
And how the areas have to be, yeah, to be able to be served, correct.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Rodney, is that adjacent park in city limits? I know there's a shelter there and some public facilities. Would it make sense to bring those?
It's not in the city limits.
That's Oak Knoll, right?
Oak Knoll Park is cooperatively maintained, I understand, with the city, but it is not in the city limits right now.
Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. What, what's another alternative to this, Rodney?
In order to have urban development, you're going to need to have urban, urban services, sewer and water.
Well, I'm just, I'm talking alternative to the lift station. Is there an alternative or no?
There isn't one that has, has been found to be suitable by the city.
Other than what Arnett wanted to do prior by having the.
I'm sorry?
Other than what Arnett wanted to do previously, where he wanted to assess costs to the property owners in the area.
Are you talking about the grinder pipes or the grinder stations or?
The utilities is involved in evaluating the infrastructure that would be necessary to service. The developer proposes the system, then the city would ultimately, the utilities would ultimately need to take management of that, and there's certain systems that are suitable for acceptance in a public system.
Right.
Yeah, my question is, let's say the area between the church there and the substation that becomes annexed in at some point, or, or, yeah, there, or I was thinking to the north, would that then require another lift station at that point then, or that, I mean, or is this one sized enough that it's only picking up the area shown? It doesn't pick up additional area potentially?
It's only being designed to accommodate this particular location. There's a limited service area with a sanitary district to the north. This is served on a system around the lake. This area likely would not need to flow into the lift station area to be served for, for gravity systems.
Okay.
That might be able to be accomplished down Page Street or some other avenue.
Okay.
There isn't any imminent development in that area being contemplated, nor is there anybody expending dollars to evaluate that fully.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No, I would just say it makes logical sense if it's in the city to connect up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And they'll continue to work with, with you Rodney as they proceed through the CARPSY process. All right, great. Agenda item number 12 is a discussion regarding the proposed ordinance amendments as recommended by the Landmarks Commission related to the request by the common council to develop an ordinance for consideration by the council that would amend existing city ordinances such that no building in a historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places may be demolished without review and recommendation by the Landmarks Commission and a decision by the common council based on inappropriate and lawful standards. And I know that Attorney Dragnew is here to talk us through the landmarks work.
Your Honor, quick question. Is there anyone here that's for, that would have a reason to be, take up item 13?
I don't believe so.
Make sure someone's going to sit down for a discussion.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just provide a little background. I think all of you, maybe most of you, are familiar with the issue generally that is before us tonight. This is something that I've been working on with the Landmarks Commission since, I think we started in about June, as I recall. On Thursday last week, I met with them one last time to review the drafts of the materials that were included in the packet, and they had some additional changes which I made yesterday and, and we'll be going through it tonight. I think that what I, what would be helpful here would be for me to start with, I want to kind of start with a little overview of the lay of the land here, what, what the issues were that they were working on, and then get to the specifics of the ordinances. So, yeah, let's go through this quick. So, first, well, yes, okay. From a historic preservation standpoint, there are kind of three areas that I've learned we need to be aware of. One is chapter 38 of the city's ordinances, which is related to the Landmarks Commission and landmarks and landmark sites. These are locally designated landmarks and landmark sites. The second is chapter 78, which is our zoning code. And within our zoning code, we have something called the downtown design overlay zoning district. And there are elements of that ordinance that are definitely at issue here. And third, we have the National Historic Preservation Act. We do have properties and areas in the city that are listed as, or either as buildings or, or properties that are listed on the National Historic, National Register of Historic Places or the State Register of Historic Places. So, those are the three different categories to be aware of. Can we have the next slide? The National Register, it really doesn't provide any regulatory framework. There are no, if you're, if you're a property that's listed on the National Register, you know, there, for a private landowner, it's kind of an honorific program. You can be proud of the fact that your property is on the National Register, and there are some tax credit eligibility things that flow from that. But that designation does not lead to regulation of how you do things on your property. There is a state notice process before you demolish the property, for example, but the state doesn't require any particular approval for that. And the owner has the right to say, no, I don't want to be listed on the National Register. So, that's kind of one thing to bear in mind. Can we have the next slide? For chapter 38, the purpose of chapter 38 is to promote historic preservation by designating local landmarks, landmark sites and locally designated historic districts, and then regulating changes to those properties through the chapter 38 certificate of appropriateness process, which is mainly something that is done by the Landmarks Commission. And from my point of view, that's kind of like the highest level of regulatory protection that could be on the table for a particular property. Chapter 78, and, and this downtown design overlay zoning district, the language that we have in the code right now talks about the purpose that it has of preserving and enhancing the aesthetic qualities and attaining a consistent visually pleasing image in the downtown area. Can we have the next slide, please? This just gives you a sense of that overlay zoning district map. I think if you go to the next screen, there's, now, that's in general what the downtown design overlay district is, and it, it generally corresponds to the, to the, to the historic district that's listed on the National Register. Next slide, please. Another view of that Main Street historic district, next slide. These are just an inventory of properties that are listed on the historic district. And these are city designated landmarks under chapter 38. Slide, please. So, what's regulated under chapter 38, right now, under the ordinance, any alteration or reconstruction affecting the exterior or demolition of a structure is regulated under chapter 38. With respect to historic districts, the way, the way the ordinance reads right now, it's not clear what, what the rules are, so that's one of the reasons that we've been working on it. Under chapter 78, changes in appearance are regulated and physical modifications are regulated, including demolition. And under the National Historic Preservation Act, really, there's no activities regulated per se. The approval procedures under current ordinances, so for, under chapter 38, if you're going to do something with a landmark, you need a certificate of appropriateness approved by the Landmarks Commission. The rules are unclear in historic districts. For demolition, under the current ordinance, it says that you need approval from the Landmarks Commission, but the way the ordinance is drafted, the Landmarks Commission can't actually approve demolition under the current ordinance. Under chapter 78, if it's a landmark site, the Landmarks Commission makes a recommendation and the Plan Commission makes a final decision on whatever the activity is. If it's a non-landmark property, then the Plan Commission makes the final decision. And as some of you may know, there's been a lot of conflict or controversy over whether that's really true or not. That's been my opinion, but that's the answer, but there are people who have disagreed with my opinion on that, in fact, who think that there's a different process, that the city council should have the final decision and that it should be treated like a conditional use permit. Under, that's under 78-913. Under 78-517, so right now, we have actually two different sections of ordinances in chapter 78 that deal with this downtown design overlay zoning district, and there's somewhat different language in both sections. Let's move on, because this is mostly history and where we are and that, and then we're going to get to the new stuff. So, the issues that were identified during the scope of the, during the work on this included overlapping and inconsistent procedures in chapters 38 and 78, a question about what role, if any, the plant, the Landmarks Commission should have in reviewing and approving applications under chapter 78. That's the zoning code, which is normally just what you guys do. Next, we need, we needed to talk about standards that would actually govern proposed demolition of locally designated landmarks under chapter 38. Right now, there's no way to get approval to demolish such a thing. We had confusing and unclear standards for reviewing an application under chapter 78. In section 78-517, there are detailed design standards that are provided coming out of this book that are pretty helpful if what you want to do is kind of remodel a building. But if you want to demolish a building, it's really a much bigger challenge to figure out what the standard is. There's some language in chapter, in section 78-913 that says that decisions are to be based on sound land use, urban design and economic revitalization principles. There isn't much, but that's about it in terms of helping you decide, well, should we approve this demolition or not? We, demolition is included under chapter 78 project review, so if you're in this downtown design overlay zoning district and you want to demolish a structure, something you need to get project review approval for, what standard should apply to that? We've already covered that. Next slide. Another issue we talked about is should the city council make the final decision about the demolition of a building in the downtown design overlay district? Next slide.
That did.
That's it.
Oh, that's a, that's a different one.
Oh, oh, should the city council make the final decision about demolition of a local landmark? Two different things, sorry. And then, I think this is the last slide here, should the city adopt, adopt maintenance standards that apply to the downtown design overlay zoning district and the downtown historic district? Just, I'll just mention briefly on that, we do have some, some maintenance standards in the zoning code, but they aren't particularly rigorous, in my view. They're not, they don't really provide very extensive requirements, generally speaking. There is a requirement in the existing chapter 38 that requires that if you have, if you own a local landmark, it says every person in charge of an improvement on a landmark site shall keep in good repair all of the exterior portions of such improvement to prevent it from becoming damaged or falling into a state of disrepair. So, that's in chapter 38, but that applies only with landmark, and so it doesn't apply to other properties. Now, so let me, with that background, so the Landmarks Commission worked both on developing proposed revisions to chapter 38 and on developing proposed revisions to chapter 78. I, I want to note at this time that at their meeting last Thursday, they said, they decided that they were only going to vote and make a recommendation on chapter 38. They said, well, that's, they kind of see that as their ordinance or that's kind of false in their purview, I guess. So, they actually took a vote and recommended approval, recommended to the council that this revised chapter 38 be adopted. Although they worked on and developed the changes to chapter 78 that we'll talk about, they didn't actually vote on that. They said, well, that's not really our ordinance, that's the Plan Commission's ordinance to worry about. So, I just want you to be aware of that. And then you guys will have to decide, from a procedural matter, there is no, the chapter 78, that's part of your zoning code. In order to adopt those changes, we will have to actually have a public hearing on, on chapter 78 changes. There is no public hearing required for the chapter 38 changes. It's not part of your zoning code. You could choose to have a public hearing on it, but it's not something that's required. One of the things the Plan Commission will have to do, I guess, is decide what you want to weigh in on. You want to weigh in on chapter 38 and 78 or only 78? You have to weigh in on 78, no doubt, okay? So, with respect to chapter 38, what we should have up here is a redlined draft that shows the changes to this chapter that are being recommended by the Landmarks Commission. And I'm not going to talk about every one, I'm just going to talk about the ones that I think are more substantive. So, let's scroll, let's go first to page. Six, Regulation of Demolition, because I think the changes they made to other things getting up to that were kind of technical and not really substantive. So, wow, that's what my, that's not what my page six looked like. Section 38-37?
I'm just one off from you then, apparently.
38-37, there we go. Why is that not redlined?
I don't know, it's the one you emailed me.
That's the way it came.
Yeah, we have redline copies here.
That's the old version.
You've got the old one, the one that before last Thursday.
Yeah, just go grab, go grab it off the website.
Because Rodney, what I sent you was, should have been the redline. I don't know if you go to your email and.
I put it on the web.
But there's something, I've got the issues.
Put the supplement, but it's probably.
The attorney's saying there's something even more current than what we have.
Yeah. They made changes last week, Thursday night.
So, we still, we don't even have.
Is that on the website?
It's on the, it's on the website?
It is on the website.
Can I try it? Did I put it out there?
Can you get what I, can you get what I sent you last night?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I opened up.
That's what we.
What page are you on yet?
That's. That's what I used.
This is the additional one they just sent out.
This is the one you mailed out last.
Later on, so what's different?
When you open that.
You know, compare me up.
The red line's all been stripped out.
I see you've got side markers along the edges.
Yeah.
But I'm not.
Can't see them in the text.
Oh, that's page six, so something else changed, though.
All right, so let me.
All right, well, here's what I can do. I actually have, I can work with what you guys have in your packet, and then I can point out where they made some changes. There aren't that many.
I can go to the Landmarks Commission materials from Thursday, right?
Okay.
It's all blank. Is there not supposed to be anything on page back? Oh, there we go. If you go to the one on the website, it is redlined.
It is.
Yep.
Yeah, on the, on the planning commission. Commissioner Bartlett has something different than what I have in my packet.
There's no data revision number, so I don't know.
No.
Slightly.
It's one of those blank, page five, so maybe.
Just slid it down?
Yeah. Just need to fix the format.
That helps. Add it. Nice. Nice, it's current?
Yeah, supplemental.
Go to 38, Section 38-36.
I think on the website, Page 5 is Page 6.
Oh, so it's the same?
I think so, because Page 5 is blank.
Okay, yeah, let's start here. Or no, 38-37. Okay, there we go. Starting with, so the real, I think the main focus of the discussion substantively was on how regulation, how demolition should be addressed. And so the language that you see up here is still current, still correct, so, except as otherwise provided herein, "No person shall demolish all or part of a landmark, an improvement on a landmark site, or any building or structure in a local historic district unless the commission has approved such work. Unless the commission has approved the work, the building inspector shall not issue a permit. This section shall not apply to the demolition of a building or structure that has been ordered raised by a court of competent jurisdiction pursuant to Section 6604132." We put that in because we think that we cannot prevent the demolition of a building where a court has ordered that it be raised under that statute. So we, yeah. You got a question, Matt?
Yeah, thanks. So it has to be court-ordered?
That would be a situation where, under the raise order statutes, statute, there are two ways that you might end up with a raise order. One is just the building inspector issues the order. That one, we think we can preempt under this ordinance. But there's another procedure that allows for a court to issue a building to be raised that would probably also be initiated by the building inspector, certainly the building inspector would be involved in that process. But if, in fact, that happens and a court orders that it be raised, we don't believe that, I don't believe that we can give the landmarks commission, for example, the authority to stand in the way of demolishing a building under those circumstances.
Court issue. Great. Another question, just for clarification. On the, on your PowerPoint, you had, there's no historic districts currently in the city, correct?
Not currently.
No locally designated historic districts.
Locally designated.
Under Chapter 38.
Got it.
There are historic districts on the national register, state register, done that have been designated by the city under Chapter 38, as of yet.
Peggy's here, and she's, sounds like she can clarify that. She seems concerned about that.
Peggy, just raise your hand if there's anything. If I step out of line, I didn't see her back there. Now I, now I'll be careful.
So in the case that something was developed as a historic district, we're just including that right now?
Yes. We have to talk about how we would deal with it if we had one. They may decide, yeah, let's designate this area as a local district.
Downtown design overlay isn't a historic district, right?
It's not now, but they might take a run at that. Okay, so now, let's turn the page, and this is where it gets a lot more complicated. This is the standard that the landmarks commission has recommended apply to a request, an application to demolish a building that's in a locally designated landmark district or in a locally designated landmark site, okay? And there were a couple of tweaks that they made to this last Thursday night that I will point out.
Just for clarification, that is different than what we have.
Wow, Rodney, this is right. This has the change.
Yeah, Michael just put this...
Yeah, I put that on the web, too.
Okay, now, this is what, okay, this is, looks like it's been updated to reflect the changes through last Thursday.
Man, it's not what you would have, but it would be what...
Yeah, it's current, I'm just saying, so we're not looking at...
Right, yeah, it would be different than this.
Okay. So first, let's go to C. So a demolition application out of this section shall not be approved unless the applicant demonstrates either of the following. Okay, number one, this is a three-part test. Someone would have to show the following three things. One, the physical characteristics, I don't know if I'm supposed to be talking into this, the physical characteristics of the building or improvement have changed since the landmark designation was made. Two, the change caused, has caused the structure to no longer have the physical integrity needed to embody the physical characteristics that led to a landmark designation. And three, the change was not caused by a current or prior owner's failure to maintain the building or structure.
And it has to have all three?
You'd have to have all three. You'd have to be able to show all three of those things to demonstrate that you meet that standard to demolish a landmark under Chapter 38.
What is defined landmark in this Section 38?
Chapter 38, this would be, let me go here, a...
Local landmark.
A landmark means an improvement which has a special character or historic interest in showing the development heritage, heritage or cultural character of the city, state, or nation, which has been designated as a landmark under this article. In order to be designated as a landmark, there's a big process that you have to, that the city has to go through. I think it starts generally at the landmarks commission, and they do whatever they do to determine whether they think the property should be so designated. I think they then forward that recommendation to the city council, which would have the final authority to decide whether to put that landmark designation on the property or not. Is that roughly speaking accurate? Okay, yeah.
Thanks. Does that blanket cover building, structure, or anything in a historic district?
Well, so again, we're dealing with landmarks, which I see as improvements on the property, landmark sites, which is a parcel of land which has things on it, and then you've got districts. We did have some discussion about this last Thursday, and so let's say we're talking about a landmark, and the discussion was, well, let's say that someone had, there's a fence on the property, so designated landmark, there's a fence there. How do we know if that fence is subject to that level of protection? The answer I heard from the landmarks commission is that you should be able to look at the, I guess they called it an application, for landmark designation, and then the approval itself, to determine what features on the property are deemed part of the protected landmark and what are not. So there might be, there could, for example, be, and again, Peggy, just tell me if I'm getting off base here, there could be a landmark where you have a site that has a building on it that is fully protected, but maybe someone put a fence up at some point that isn't really part of the, what's being protected and would not be subject to this...
Chain link vinyl fence or something?
Yeah. So as I understand it, if, if you own one of these properties and you want to do something and you're asking, well, what's covered and what's not, we have to go and look at the file and say, why was this designated as a landmark? What, what features are protected, what features are not protected? If they were to create a district, I assume they'd have to answer that same kind of question. What features in this district are protected and not protected? I assume that would be a pretty big undertaking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there standards for showing the integrity, the physical integrity? How they determine whether the physical integrity has deteriorated? Because different people looking at it may have different thoughts on the physical integrity of a building unless they have a professional engineer, a structural engineer, look at it. Is there any...
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have any more guidance than what this language provides. So the applicant would have to come in with, and make some kind of a showing that there's been a physical change, number one, and that that change has caused the structure to no longer have the physical integrity needed to embody the physical characteristics. So again, now we're back and looking at, why was this designated as a landmark? What characteristics led to that designation? And has there been a change to those characteristics? I think that's what this says, I think that's what the landmark commission was going for. So that would be what you, that's what they would be trying to figure out.
And it can't be anything that, that happened due to neglect of either the current owner or any of the previous owners. So in my mind, it has to be almost a natural disaster of some type, a flood and earthquake, tornado, fire.
Could be, could be a natural disaster, and the building owner says, you know, I had a bad fire, this has been, and one of the ways I heard, at least Peggy and maybe others, talk about it, one, that I, that made me think about this a little differently, it's almost like delisting the property, in a sense. The demo, proving the demolition is almost like saying, you might have, and I think there may even be a process in here for delisting. It's like an owner comes in and says, I was, I'm on the, I'm a locally designated landmark, I shouldn't be anymore. You should not list me anymore because my property no longer meets the criteria that it used to meet, and I think it would be maybe a not dissimilar analysis than this.
The only question that I have for that, I can understand why, why you wouldn't want the current landowner to be able to say, to, I'm not saying this right, but something that the current landowner has done that would cause it to be no longer a landmark?
Yeah.
But I'm questioning how you can hold a current landowner responsible for things that prior landowners either did or didn't do. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, I do. So as I said, Chapter 38 does have a maintenance obligation associated with it that's different than the rest of the city. And so it says, "Every person in charge of an improvement on a landmark site shall keep in good repair the exterior features," and so on. So I guess my answer to that is, if you're buying a designated landmark, you're, and it's in bad shape, you're buying it subject to the obligation to take care of it. And I think you can, I mean, I think you can, you can hold people to that. That's been in there.
Do you know when you're buying a property that it's a designated landmark?
I don't know how that you, I don't know how you would find that out, because...
Well, realtors are supposed to let people know that.
Yeah, maybe, I just have an...
How do they know that, though? Only because I don't? How do they...
It's listed, it's supposed to be listed at the register of deeds office.
It's in the title somewhere.
They usually have a plaque in front of the building.
Let me ask, Michael, do you know if, as part of the process that a title company goes through, are you, is your office ever asked by title companies, is this property a local landmark, or...
Not typically. We, realtors will call.
They'll ask?
Yeah, they'll ask.
But not, it's not a standard phone call, or not a standard notification that they call.
My, honestly, I don't know whether that's a standard thing that title companies do. I've never, I've never been involved in buying a landmark property on behalf of someone, so I'm not sure, honestly. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. I have Michael Engelberger, and then I saw another hand.
I just have a question here. I guess the landmarks commission has authority over 38.
Yes.
And when they change that, that goes to the council to see if they, the council agrees with those changes.
Yes.
I guess I'm confused on why would the planning commission be looking at 38 with regard to approving this?
Yeah.
We don't really have authority for this.
Well, as I said earlier, you guys will have to decide if you want to weigh in on Chapter 38 or not. You don't have to.
But I mean, you know, why would we weigh in on this? I mean, 38 has a specific set of regulations, basically, for landmark status buildings in addition to whatever else is covered under our ordinances for 78.
I'm not asking you to weigh in on this. But I think it's helpful for you to know what it is, because as you, as you are looking at 78, which is the zoning code, I think it's a good idea if you understand what 38 says. So you understand, look, there's different layers of regulation here. There's 38, there's 78, and I think it would be helpful to you know, you guys might say, well, we're not, we don't care what 38 says, I mean, we're not going to vote on it, we're not going to make a recommendation on it, that's not our problem. That's fine with me, but I do think it's helpful for you to see it before we get into Chapter 78. But if you guys want me to stop on, not, I get this stuff.
I think commissioners should also seek clarity on 38 so that they fully understand what it means. And Commissioner Hannah had a question.
Yeah, I'll continue on that. I see no wrong reason to have more eyes on this with different backgrounds, different opinions. I'm not afraid to make a judgment on this. I think it's, we've been asked in the agenda to make a judgment on this, so I think that's what I'm going to do as a commissioner. And I think we should make a judgment on this as we've been asked to do that, and not avoid the issue.
Well, look, if I could...
So I would say, we continue to look at this and have more, you know, as what seems to be apparent in the whole process of this, is to have more bodies look at these issues than, you know, what happened in the past, which arose, this issue is just the planning commission's doing this, and all of a sudden, it's, well, we didn't know about this, and we don't know about this, I want to have a say, I want to have a say. So I don't see any harm in it, especially for the fact of just pure understanding of the thought process to know and to educate other citizens. So I don't think we should stop, and we need to continue.
Thank you. Commissioner Varmen.
Yeah. I don't know if we're going to end up going back to it or not, but on 38-7A, I would just throw in the need, just, I know you're trying to work in the ability to deal with local historic districts just in case they are created under Section 38. Yeah. I would suggest having some language with respect to contributing buildings or structures. If you look at that first sentence where it says, "Or any building or structure in a local historic district," I know when you're designating, typically designating local historic districts, you want a contiguous boundary. So we often, in, just in practice, will have buildings that were built much more recently are not really necessary for the definition or designation of that district, but they happen to be in it, but they're not contributing. That's the way they do it nationally and at the state level. And I think you, just to save you difficulties, like we were talking about with assessing whether a fence is important to a landmark, I think knowing whether a site, I mean, a building or structure within that local historic district is contributed or not is going to be important with respect to demolition.
Okay, so let's stop there for a minute. So we do have a definition of contributing property in Section 38-32. It defines contributing property as any building, structure, or object which adds to the historical integrity or architectural qualities that make a historic district listed locally or federally significant. So what I'm hearing from you is a recommendation that that language in 38-37A be modified to say, "Or any contributing property in a local district."
Any contributing building or structure, or any building or structure contributing to a local historic district? Some kind of wording that will tie back to that definition?
The definition is contributing property.
Okay.
And that's defined as a building, structure, or object.
Then that would make sense to use that language.
And again, I, and this is up to you guys, not me. So there's a suggestion from someone. I'm kind of here as a facilitator, I guess, I would say. So if you guys decide as a group that you want me to make that kind of a change, I will be happy to make it. Let me make one other note to be maybe responsive to Alda Person Engelberger's point. If what comes out of the plan commission is different in any way than what came out of the landmarks commission, my intention would be to provide both of those things to the city council, which will ultimately decide what to do here. So with that, you guys just have to tell me how you want to proceed. Do you want me to make a note of that change? Do you like that change? Is that something you want to see done?
Well, since I brought it up, I mean, I don't see us as having the power to change it, but we're reviewing it, and it's something I noticed, so I don't know if that's something that Peggy or the landmarks commission wants to consider, or whether we just make a note to the council. But I don't think it's, I'm here to vote to say, this is, this needs to be changed. It's just, it's something I anticipate is maybe potentially becoming an issue with the ordinance if you ever do have a designated local historic district.
So let me, let me offer another thought. So there's going to be a public hearing on Chapter 78. There isn't, you'll have to tell me if you want that to include a listed public hearing on Chapter 38. Anything that you guys do in terms of making tweaks, there'll be a public hearing, and people from landmarks could come to that and offer comments on it. I just need you to tell me, this, again, this is up to you. If you tell me to make a change, if you tell me, I don't want you to change anything landmarks commission did, that's theirs, that's what I'll do. If you say, I want to make a change that we, as the plan commission, should recommend to council, I'll do that.
We can make a recommendation to landmarks.
Then we have to go back to landmarks. If you guys want to go back to landmarks, I love going to landmarks, I mean, Thursday night.
Commissioner Hannah.
A few questions, just procedural. Are we, are we making motions? Are we just kind of like friendly agreement for amendments? Are we just kind of like friendly agreement for amendments? Then, another, I agree with Commissioner Varman's statement, like, the more clarification we can have, the better. No more gray areas here. But just to clarify what we talked about as a landmark in establishing a historic district that should be done listed in the historic district.
So, I, here's the...
When it's formulated, it should be listed as this is contributing and not, is what I understood.
I think it's an excellent point, and it's not something we talked about specifically at the Landmarks Commission.
Peggy, do you want to come up to the podium?
I think the last point was, I'd welcome Peggy to come up and talk.
And if you want to ask Peggy what she thinks, here she is. Speaking on behalf of the entire Landmarks Commission.
Hi, everybody. So, preservation best practices is to not list contributing and non-contributing in a local district at the time of designation. And the reason is because that can change. A building that is non-contributing can be restored and be contributing, and vice versa. There can be an alteration to a building that's, you know, beyond a property owner's control, like a catastrophic event, then that building would be non-contributing. And so, because those things can change, then I think this was brought up under, you know, reviewing for a demolition permit, then at that time, there would be that evaluation, "Does this property contribute or not?" And so, that the evaluation is based on current conditions, not based on something that possibly was the condition 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And so, the idea is, you know, if you have a document that says a building is non-contributing because it had been altered, but a building owner restores that building, possibly the nomination isn't updated. And so, then you're looking at a nomination that has outdated information, and you wouldn't want to demolish a restored building that then contributes to the district. And so, that's why it works that way.
Commissioner Varman.
I like that case, but I'll look at the flip side of it. Let's say, as part of the original designation, the Landmarks Commission knows that this is not a contributing building, but we don't specify that it isn't. So, now you have this property owner who then, whatever issue comes up, they have to, they have to fulfill C1 under Section 38-7.
And they can't.
And they can't because it says the physical characteristics of the building improvement have changed. But it was not contributing before, it's still not contributing, nothing's changed. But you look at that, and they can't meet any of those criteria, even though they weren't contributing, and there hasn't been an effort to restore it. I'm just, I'm just seeing...
But if a building isn't contributing, then that hasn't changed.
Right. But it doesn't, it still, as you read it...
Here's the problem, Peggy, is I see it, if you look at the, so if, if you look at the standard for demolition, so you own a building in the historic district, it wasn't called out as a contributing or non-contributing.
In a historic district, part of the nomination has a period of significance, and it outlines the characteristics and what makes the district historic. And part of that is a period of significance. And so, that means the historic period within which buildings were constructed, those would be in the historic period. So, if you have a building that's constructed outside of the historic period, then that building isn't, doesn't contribute to the district.
So, why is it, can't, why wouldn't it make sense, then, to say, "Backup, please, to A"? Because it sounds like when, when you create this district in the first place, and there is a definition in Chapter 38, Peggy, of contributing property.
Mm-hmm.
But it sounds like you're saying that when you create the district, there is a distinction between contributing and non-contributing based on the period?
Period of significance. Yeah, so if you have a building that was constructed in the modern period, that's a building that wouldn't contribute to the historic character of the district.
Okay, so, and would that be known at the time the district was created? Would that be part of the documentation of what it is and isn't contributing?
Yes.
Okay. So, if that's true, then now go down, go down, well, look at A. This applies to any building or structure in a local district, whether it contributes or not. That's the problem. Do you want this demolition standard to apply to a non-contributing building? Because the way it's drafted now, it would.
I think Matt's got some...
If I could add something to, to, I think, further strengthen, to add non-contributing is that historic district local definition in 38-32 says, "Which contains one or more landmarks or landmark sites as well as those abutting improvement parcels." So, even abutting parcels are connected to this historic district. Now, they're not outlined, right?
I don't know, that's an, we never looked at that definition. That's pretty interesting. So, do you have 38, do you have that definitions, Peggy? 38-32 definition of historic district local.
If I own a home adjacent to this line, say, my back lot line butts up to this, I'm still considered in the historic district, but I don't know if it was considered to be contributing.
Yeah, so there, I think there's two ways to read that definition. One is to read it to say, if you're in a budding improvement parcel, which has been identified by the commission during the historic district creation process, as one that should fall within the provisions of this article? That doesn't, but this is a very bad reading of this. This doesn't make sense to me. So, the alternative reading is it makes no sense either. Because the alternative reading is that if you're in a budding improvement parcel, that somehow, sometimes the commission can just say, "We think you should be subject to this without any process," and that doesn't make sense to me either. So, we didn't look at that definition, but it's an interesting point.
Right. And are those, say, homeowners or other business owners aware that they fall under this manipulation?
They, right now, they do. Right now, they do if the Landmarks Commission says they do.
Right.
But there's no mechanism here that would help us understand how that might happen or when that might happen. Here's what I could see happening. Here's the, here's the major disaster that I see happening. Somebody owns a building right outside the historic district and comes to the Planning Department, says, "I want to do something to this building. I'm not in the historic district." Michael says, "Well, you're not in the historic district. You're good to go. We'll go to..." Landmarks Commission says, "Well, we think that you should fall within the provisions of this article. So, even though you're not in the district, we're going to make you follow this." Now, we got a major legal problem on our hands. So, I didn't, we didn't talk about this before, but I would strike that, second part of that definition personally. But again, it's not my call. Peggy, what do you think?
Where that language comes from is, it usually happens in larger cities where an adjacent development would adversely impact the character of an historic district. And so, that's a provision that allows review of a project that's adjacent to a historic district, to review that project, to ensure that that project, if constructed, would not adversely impact the character of the historic district.
Okay.
That's where that comes from.
So, what does that mean, though? Does that mean that if this says, "Abutting improvement parcels which the commission determines should fall within the provisions," how does the commission make that determination and when?
Well, if I were just to look at this as it's written, it would just be only those properties that are immediately adjacent. I mean, that's how I interpret abutting improvement.
But how would they know?
I would have to agree, though, because if I bought a, my house is next to a landmark designated district, but it's not designated landmark, obviously, I'm not going to know that when I buy it, but if I want to make a change to it, and I come in to Michael, and he goes, "Well, you can't change it because now you're not going to look like you're a budding district." I think that, it's confusing.
No.
Peggy, what I'm hearing you say is that if it's a budding, then it's automatically subject to Chapter 38.
Even though it's not a participating member?
Even though it's not part of the district.
Yeah, they were talking about, I mean, it was basically, it was the, we jumped off the contributor.
And that, and that's not exactly what it says. What it says is, "Which the commission determines should fall within the provisions," suggesting that if you're a budding, then the commission has some opportunity to look at it and decide, "Are we going to subject you to this, or are we not going to subject you to this?"
Or does it mean that if there's an empty lot and I choose to build a new building, I have to make it look like the historic neighborhood next door?
So, then that just, why not just move the barrier of the district? It seems to be a complete gray area where you should almost list, in a historic district, "This is our district, but you are also part of our district because you're a budding." And there's no clear definition in here of what makes that, you know, it's just determined, and that's all that it says. It doesn't say, you know, "How is that designated? How are you supposed to know? How's it documented? You know, how does that change? How do you, how do you appeal? How do you, you know, any, any of that?"
Right. So, you guys have identified an issue. You have to decide how you want to handle it.
Which one are you talking about here?
Commissioner Truel has a comment.
Which definition are you talking about?
Definition of historic, of local historic district?
This one right here.
Right now, that definition includes not only the properties within the boundaries of the district, but it says that, it says, "As well as those abutting improvement parcels which the commission determines should fall within the provisions of this article," blah, blah, blah.
So, an unimproved parcel, right? Well, I would say...
That's not what that's...
An improvement parcel, which is, I don't... Which is what? I mean, an improvement parcel is a built lot?
I don't know exactly. It's not defined.
Is it a park?
It's not defined.
Yeah.
I think it mean, I think the intent is a parcel which is either improved or could be improved.
Yes.
I think...
Commissioner Varman.
Thank you, Mayor. The more, I think we're twisting some of this stuff a little bit. If you, the historic district local means an area designated by the commission. So, it is a specific area. So, I think there has to be a boundary drawn around it. I think what the, a budding is doing is it's saying that when we drew this boundary, some of these are clearly landmarks or landmark sites, but this particular parcel is included in the historic district local because it is abutting this landmark, and it is crucial to our definition of the district. And so, I don't think it's going to be a situation where a budding is outside the district. I think it's abutting the landmarks and landmark sites, but it's in the district, the way I read this paragraph.
Peggy, couldn't you solve this problem? I mean, when you actually designate a district by choosing those adjacent parcels that you think should be included?
Yes.
I mean, in an ideal world, I mean, what we're looking for is, is as much as, as when we talk about rezoning or something, we're identifying specific lots, specific things. The whole challenge comes in here in terms of kind of that notification, and whether we're suddenly reaching outside the district and not letting people know, there's no vehicle that tells me if I'm buying the, an abutting property under the, not under Commissioner Varman's interpretation, but as we were kind of talking before, that I'm buying a next-door lot thinking I'm going to do something with it and change it or make modifications. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we really almost want direct addresses, you know, and so we can identify specific properties.
Is there, is there a consensus to revise the definition of historic district local to get rid of that abutting improvement language?
Commissioner Hanna had a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, what, is it really adding a whole lot? I mean, besides confusion. I think it should just be, be removed. And if, when you're establishing the historic district, if it's contributing, include it. If it's not, don't.
I think Peggy said that that's an option.
Yes. And I think that the way the Landmarks Commission, I haven't had a chance to ask everyone's opinion, but I think that the way they're approaching this was that this is defining, that the district is, is defined. So, the area is defined, and that, within that area, you can have landmarks, and you can have other properties that perhaps aren't landmarks, but they're still within the district.
Oh, so you're saying that you read this to mean that if, when it says, "As well as those abutting improvement parcels," you're saying those have to be within the boundaries of the district itself?
That's the way I interpret this.
Okay.
It's within the district. And so, for example, that would include a parking lot, or, or simply a vacant lot.
So, then maybe we just add those few words, "As well as those abutting improvement parcels within the district."
Yeah, why don't we say, "As well as those abutting improvement parcels included in the district..."
Or that lie within...
"...which the commission determines should be." So, it's clear that they have to be within the boundaries of the district.
Within the district.
So, I'm going to say, "Included within the district..."
Established district or...
"...boundary." Okay, so I'm at, I'm saying, "As well as those abutting improvement parcels," why don't we get rid of the word "abutting"? Because that's where I think all the confusion is. Why don't we say, "As well as those..." Can we just say parcels?
Sure, because within a district, any non-contributing or vacant lot is going to be abutting to, you know, other properties in the district.
So, "Which contains one or more landmarks or landmark sites as well as other parcels included within the district boundary which the commission determines should fall within the provisions of this article to ensure that their appearance," blah, blah, blah.
There we go.
Everybody like that?
Want to say "non-contributing"?
We shouldn't be screwing with this language. This is boilerplate language from the Landmarks authorities in the state and the federal government. We shouldn't be screwing with these.
You want to just leave it as it is?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, it's up to you guys. I'm going to wait, I await your decision.
I think the boilerplate, Michael, works in some instances, but not for Stoughton, so I'm hoping what we're doing is making it, but I'm hoping, can I finish real quick? I'm hoping what we're doing is making it so that it's clear for Stoughton.
I understand, but the problem is, you got a group of people here that are not in the authority to make these decisions. They're, this is...
I'm hopeful if we were coloring way too far out the lines, Peggy would tell us so.
Well...
She seems to be okay with this clarification.
The problem is, we are not experts in, this group is not experts in landmark, in landmark language and those types of things. We're messing up the process here is what we're doing.
Commissioner Hanna.
Thanks. I would disagree. I think...
Yeah, you say that all the time.
Michael, Michael, allow him to speak. Michael, it's, Matt's got the floor right now.
Because obviously, there seems to be, you know, we are representatives for the city, and there's obviously clear confusion amongst us as citizens and commissioners and council members and chairman of the Landmarks Commission, to the attorney, to not understand clearly what is being stated. And just to say, "Well, let's just go along with what states say." Well, why don't we take the opportunity to improve it for ourselves and make sure that if this does come up, we don't run into the issue again where we need to halt progress on everything and try to figure out interpretations and then go through another expensive process to rewrite an ordinance? That I don't, like I said, I don't see an issue with us weighing in our opinion because ultimately, this is going to go to the council to make final determination. So, you know, more eyes on this, I don't see as a negative thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanna. Commissioner Engelberger.
I have no problem with more eyes on this. What I have a problem with is people that are misinterpreting language that they don't understand. That's what I have a problem with.
Okay, thank you.
That's what's happening here.
Commissioner Varman.
I, I've been working in the historic preservation field for over 20 years, and every community, every community's ordinance is based on standards, but there's wordsmithing that's done. And so, certainly, we could go back to the recommended language for defining historic district local, if that's of desire. But it's clear to me that the wording here, and I don't know at what point in its life, but this paragraph does lead to ambiguity and confusion. And I think that it is something that we're seeing, and that's all we're doing is commenting on it. I don't know if it's necessarily our place to wordsmith it, but I think we can draw attention to the fact that the historic district local definition here leaves open, leaves the door open for problems... the door open for problems in interpretation and application. And so I think it needs to at least be looked at.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanna. All right. Attorney Dragni, back to you.
Yeah, well, again, I'm not changing anything unless you tell me to. So if you tell, if you want me to change it, I'll change it. If you don't want me to change it, I won't change it. I will say I agree that the language as written is, my initial reaction to that language is not what we are currently saying it means.
I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, and you, you all need to tell me if I'm way off base, is that the planning commission is making recommendations for improvement and that as a recommendation can go on to council as council reviews both 38 and 78.
You can make recommendations on this or not. It's totally up to you guys.
So in that regard, should we have a motion that recommends these clarifying words in defining a local historic district local? Commissioner Hanna.
Thanks, Mayor. I mean, I don't, I mean, is there any rush order on this? I don't see a problem with sending this back to Landmarks to, to review some of our thoughts.
I would say there's not a rush order on chapter 7, 38. I think there is a rush order on chapter 78 in the sense that there is a property owner who's been waiting for kind of a, the outcome of this process, but that particular property's not subject to chapter 38. So there's not a rush order that I'm aware of.
So then let's send these back to Landmarks at your next committee and as recommendations.
Sure. I have a question for Peggy. I mean, do you, do you see that this is helping clarify certain things in the ordinance for you guys? Is it, do you see it beneficial for us to look through this? I mean, we were, we've been given it. I've spent time looking through it and have certain thoughts about it and, you know, specific thoughts of like, I didn't understand this. How does this apply? So I guess up to you as far as representative in Landmarks, do you see it beneficial?
I think long-term, it's always in our, in our collective best interest to have ordinances that are clear, that everyone knows how to follow, that everyone can understand. It's not in anyone's best interest, and it's certainly not the Landmarks' best interest to have an ordinance that people will misinterpret and sometimes willfully so. And so, you know, to Mike's concern, I don't think that there's a disadvantage to having feedback about language that might be confusing, knowing that the Landmarks Commission would look at those, would look at that information. And if there was something that was veering off the road as far as this really isn't the intent of the, the ordinance, or this is not appropriate, that that would be a time for Landmarks to step in and say, you know, that's really not an accurate understanding of what the ordinance is or what the language is and to, you know, steer that back on track. So I think that was a long-winded way of saying, I think it's fine to offer clarifications because I think that we can, we should have an ordinance that is clear and everybody can understand.
I think then it's important to also note that if we're interpreting it wrong, hopefully the Landmarks Commission themselves could make some changes so that it doesn't happen when we look at it a little bit later. I have Commissioner Truul and then Hanna.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at the end of the day, we're, at least specifically in this discussion that's been going on for a bit here with regard to the local, it, it comes back to what is the intent? And I think that's our, our concern and question. Because again, if you read it again, at least as I read it again, the fact that a historical district, it sounds like per this could literally be one building. And if it's one building, that, you know, the, the adjacent properties do have the impact. And I heard you say, Peggy, that, that part of what Landmarks wants is to make sure that if we have a, a well-established either series of buildings or a district, that, that Landmarks, that the value of those landmarks can be greatly affected and impacted by, by an abutting property if it's, if it's just outside. Now again, I think Commissioner Barman was on the right track. I, I read it the same way he did in terms of thinking that, okay, some of this is within the district, some buildings are going to be landmarks and some aren't, and therefore those would be the abutting properties. But, but I mean, you want the ability to be able to take a look at that and say, don't put up a high-rise or don't put up a parking lot or don't put up something that next to, immediately adjacent to a historic or a landmark building. That's, that's really your intent. I mean, or at least what I, what I gather or part of what the commission's intent is.
Thank you, Commissioner Barman.
I will propose something that might be a simple solution here as I think about this. I'm not having a chance to go through and look up other definitions. I think if you just add an additional definition defining what a abutting means, it would give you a chance to say in this context, what does a abutting mean? It doesn't mean outside the district. It means something else. And so just have a simple that. And then within this paragraph, say, after the abutting improvement parcels, which the commission determines should fall within the provision, within the designated area and the provisions of this article. I think somehow you have to say that the improvement, abutting improvement parcels are within the district. And so it's just a couple of words to add that clarification that the abutting parcels are in the district and within the provisions of the article and then maybe just have addition for abutting. I think just because worse, and maybe it's just a planning commission is so used to using abutting in a different context than what this might typically fall, that I think it might help.
Commissioner Hanna.
Sure, yeah. What I was going to say is just, you know, I guess to feed on what you said, Peggy, is, you know, I appreciate you guys putting in all this work to get this to this point. And I appreciate you being here and talking it through with us because ultimately I think it's best that there's a collaborative or a reviewed, you know, document that goes to council. It just only makes it stronger. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of suggestions for changes on the historic district local. I heard one that we had sort of collectively worked on and I heard a separate, a different one, a little different anyway, that Commissioner Barman is recommending. The, the will of the group, I guess.
And it sounds like another issue that's out there, but I, but I'm not still sure what you want to do with it is, does this group want to suggest changes that would then go back to Landmarks for review again?
I believe I heard that the group did because chapter 38, like you said, isn't, we have time on chapter 38.
As far as I know, we have time, yeah.
Yep.
I think any proposed changes to the Landmarks ordinance should go back to the Landmarks Commission. I think it would avoid confusion at council.
Yes.
Because Landmarks ordinance is recommended directly from the Landmarks Commission to council. And so I do not want council having competing.
Two separate versions?
Competing ordinances.
I would agree.
So if there's a recommendation for a, a change to the Landmarks ordinance, then it can just be reviewed back at the Landmarks Commission so that we have one ordinance being forwarded to council for review and recommendation.
That's fine with me. Is that what, is that the consensus of the plan commission?
That's the way I vote.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I see a lot of heads nodding.
Yep. Commissioner Barman.
And if I could go back to my initial comment that kicked it off in terms of contributing, not contributing, I think what, and it might help, our concern over this historic district local as well. I, I like Peggy's explanation for why we're not saying contributing within A under 38, 37. But I think within that context, it might be, behooves us to consider under C to have a, a third class. If you go down where we have item number one, you have to fulfill all three of those criteria. And I can see a problem where if a building wasn't contributing to begin with and it's still not contributing, it can't satisfy any of those. So if, after you have or there, you had an additional bullet, two, a new two, and then the other one would become three that just says, or the property was not contributing to begin with and is still not contributing, it, it puts it in a different class. I think that allows you to not necessarily define it as contributing in the front end, but it allows those buildings that just can't fulfill number one and they were, they really never were intended to. It gives them that ability to evaluate it. And then the Landmark Commission would have to evaluate whether it was contributing or not.
I think that that's, that's a fine recommendation for a clarification. I, the way I look at this is that if you have a non-contributing building, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't meet that standard of having characteristics that led to the landmark designation.
Yeah, but the problem is, Peggy, if we don't do something like what you're suggesting, if you look at A, it's a building in the district and it, and you, you can't satisfy C1 without showing all three of those things. The first thing you got to show is there's been a change to the building. And so if there's been no change to the building, you can't come in under that standard and say, my building is not changed, but I should be authorized to demolish it because it, it never had any characteristics that were important in the first place. That's not.
That would be a false.
That's not under C1. That doesn't work under C1.
So I think that, again, I think that the language that was, been proposed for clarifying contributing.
And it'll come back to you guys to, so now we've got two things. Because, and I got to make some notes and see if you guys are all on the same page with this. So one clarification, let's start with historic district local. To me, the, the thing that was a little bit confusing about this was this reference to abutting improvements. Because in my mind, the word abutting suggested abutting the district, not abutting landmarks within the district, but still within the district. So to me, if I was revising it, the way I did it was to say, historic district local means an area designated by the commission which contains one or more landmarks or landmark sites, comma, as well as other parcels included within the district boundary, which the commission determines should fall within the provisions of this article, et cetera. You had a, you had a different way of doing it. And when we go back to Landmarks, they may have yet another way of doing it. So do you, do you want, one way we could approach this is I could, I could not come up with any language. I could just say, Landmarks Commission, Plan Commission suggests that you study this and come up with a different language. Clarify language.
Well, I think the Plan Commission is, is, or what I'm seeing, most of the, the majority of the Plan Commission is agreeing with what you had just read, Matt. And I'm going to look to you all for, was that consensus and?
You want to make a language suggestion and then it goes back? Or do you just want to say, please look at this?
But I think, I think it's good to have a suggestion to go back. Right, otherwise they're going to go, yeah, I looked at it before. Good to me then.
We're looking for intent, legislative intent here. And it's our intent to say this.
I think the biggest takeaway is going to be clarification of where those abutting parcels fall or where those other parcels.
Are they in the district or are they outside of the district? That's all, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Abutting, does that mean it's touch, you know, lot lines are touching?
I get that. Do you guys want to have some decision on suggested language tonight? Or do you just want to say to Landmarks, can you guys look at this? Well, and I don't care.
Peggy, if you have your, your opinion, if suggested language would help, help you understand our, our thought process here or this discussion here? Or would it be helpful for you guys just to say, this item, this item, this item in regards to specific?
You want my opinion? I think suggested language would at least communicate to the Landmarks Commission a little more clearly what you guys are kind of struggling with or asking them to look at. Because if you just say, look at this section, they might be like, what do you mean, look at this section? But if you say, look at this section and think about whether this language helps clarify, that might help them.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that if there's something that you want to relay to the Landmarks Commission about language, that you should just say what that is so that the commission doesn't have to guess.
Yeah, great.
So is what I read to you guys good enough?
Say, Todd, if you want to, if you want to do something different.
Well, here's, here's my concern, and it, and it goes back a little bit to, to Mike's concern earlier about the reason some of this language was created to begin with. And I think, I, I think the reason behind, and again, it's used within a different context, the reason behind abutting is dealing with the fact that we have to provide some rationale for including properties that aren't landmarks and, and landmark sites. And it's all in this desire to get a contiguous boundary, a contiguous district where we're trying to accomplish something. And so I think there's some value into having a term like abutting. And I think improvement parcels, improvement is, I'm a little concerned about just dropping abutting and improvement and just saying other parcels.
Okay, I got another one for you then. So what if we say, historic district local means an area designated by the commission which contains one or more landmarks or landmark sites, comma, and then leave this the same, as well as those abutting improvement parcels, which the commission determines should, and then we would insert here, we would say, should be included within the boundaries of the district and, and then delete, fall within the provisions of this article, and then say, to ensure that their appearance and development is harmonious with the abutting landmarks or landmark sites. Do you want me to just read that with, without interruption? So here's how I would read. Historic district local means an area designated by the commission which contains one or more landmarks or landmark sites, as well as those abutting improvement parcels, which the commission determines should be included within the boundaries of the district to ensure that their appearance and development is harmonious with the abutting landmarks or landmark sites.
And, and what you're excluding there is that they fall within the provisions of this article.
Well, they will because they'll be in the district.
Well, it doesn't say that. You just took it out.
Perhaps even simpler than that. Again, it's back to just understanding what this is intending. Again, you, you, keep the first, keep the first sentence, you know, the way it is, but then basically, what we're really adding, and guys correct me on this one, but, but effectively we're saying, okay, it's the district as designated by the commission which contains one or more of the landmarks and landmark sites, as well as those abut, so we're talking about the district wishing includes landmarks and sites and things. So again, big box, smaller boxes inside terms of landmarks. So as well as those abutting improved district, improvement parcels within the district.
Yes.
Which the commission determines should fall. So just put it right there. That's really what we're saying.
It's just three words.
That's fine with me.
Then it's clean.
Okay, let me get that. As well as those abutting improvement parcels within the district?
Yes.
Which, okay.
With the commission determines.
Add those three words together.
That's fine with me.
Send it to Landmarks to look at.
Just a, just a question. I, I like that, Scott. Would it, is it, is it better to say within the district or within the designated area? Because that's the way we started the definition. Means an area designated by the commission. So is it those abutting improvement parcels within the designated area or within the district? Because, I mean, we're kind of use.
Yes, because we shouldn't use the.
The term within the definition.
Term within the definition.
Designated area.
Okay, want to say designated area?
Yeah.
You're on the same page because it's, it's just whatever, whatever is the cleanest description there.
Yes.
It just clarifies, because I mean, you, you said it the best when it first came up. Here's how you were reading it as opposed to when Matt was saying, hey, I'm, I'm worried about it being outside the district, it's within the district. We just need to understand it.
Okay. All right. Everybody happy with that?
All right. Is there consensus on that definition? Yes?
So then the next one is up on page, when we get back to the criteria for demolition. The suggestion was to add a second standard that would apply to a property that is located within the district, but is not contributing property, was not when the district was created and is still not. How would you guys like to handle that?
We're at 38, 37A.
Uh, 38, 37C.
Adding two.
Adding a C2 after one.
And then two would become three.
Two would become three. So, conceptually, do you want to try and craft something on that?
Todd, you had something on that, right?
Yeah, it kind of depends on how the wording fits, but it's, I think it's close enough to recommend back to the, the Landmarks Commission just to say, or the, the building or improvement had, was not contributing at the time of the district was created and is still not contributing. Something simple like that.
Yeah.
It gets away from the idea that it wasn't contributing to begin with, but someone made a major investment to make it contributing and now you have a new property owner who doesn't like it or something. But it hasn't been formally assigned as a contributor.
Let me, I'm going to write this out and then I'll read it back to you guys.
Good.
Make sure you change the language and see where it says either of the following to one of the following.
Yes.
Could it be one of three then or instead of either?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, yep. Okay, so, I just want to remind us that we do have a definition of contributing property already, which we read. And so what I wrote, following your lead, is, "Two, the building or improvement was not a contributing property at the time the district was created and is still not a contributing property." Okay? So, when we got off on that discussion, we were actually looking at C here, and we had talked about 1, we haven't talked about 2 yet, which would now be 3. You ready for me to jump onto that? Let me move onto that, so?
Commissioner Kerchma, how to come?
Contributing property or improvement, it should, or, it shouldn't just, it should cover something more than just property, right?
Well, the reason I said contributing property is that the defined term in, in here-
And that includes building, structure, object.
All right, good, okay. So, the reason I included this last standard, says, "A denial of the permit will result in the taking of the owner's property without just compensation in violation of the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin or the Constitution of the United States of America." Why did I put that there, and what does it mean? So first, let me just talk about what it means. So a taking, under the Constitution, you probably are all heard of the Fifth Amendment, where the government can't take your property without paying you just compensation. That's under both the US Constitution and the state constitution. One way the government takes your property is the government really takes your property. It says, "I'm going to build a road here, I'm taking your house, and I'll pay you for it." Okay? That's not the kind of taking we're talking about. There's another kind of taking that the courts have recognized called a regulatory taking. And under the, with a regulatory taking, the property owner says to the court, "The way the city, or the state, or whoever, is regulating my property, I have no value left. There's no reasonable use of my property left whatsoever. Can't do anything with it." It's a difficult case to make, but it can be made, and some of the research we've done indicated that it's not unusual for communities that have these kinds of regulations to build in kind of a, call it a safety valve, maybe, by putting in a provision that gives the community the opportunity, if a property owner can show something like this, you know, "If you don't grant this demolition permit, if you force me to just keep this structure as it is, I can show you that there's nothing I can do with it. I can't rent it out, I can't live in it, I can't do anything with it. All I can do is keep it painted and keep a roof on it and take care of it and spend money on it, but I can't use it for anything." So this is kind of an escape clause to avoid, to give somebody the opportunity to prove that, and if they could, you could say, "Fine, we'll allow demolition." If you don't put that in, it doesn't prevent somebody from making that claim, if you don't include that standard, they could still say, "That's what you're doing to me," but then they wouldn't be doing it here. They wouldn't be coming to you and saying, "Give me a permit, because you're taking my property," and said, they'd come here, you'd say, "No, you can't have a permit," and then they'd go to the courthouse. And they'd say, "Judge, make the city pay me for my property." And if they could convince the court that there's been a regulatory taking, they're entitled to just compensation for their property, as well as all their litigation expenses. So that's why I put it there, that's what it means. Yeah.
Does, as a part of that, is there an economic element of it? Again, back to our scenario where, let's say, I purchased a property that I didn't realize, that wasn't made aware that it was a historic property, it's in some state of disrepair, I, my intention is to take it down or whatever, do I have a, have a cause to argue that-
You're costing me money.
That you're costing, that, that, in order to bring it back to the standard that it should have been at, or, you know, sort of, previous owners have benign neglect, got us to this point, can I, can I make that case, that, that, you know, the only option is just that it's going to cost me a lot more money to bring it into?
No, you have to show that, given the regulations that the city has imposed, you can't do anything with your property. And if the city could respond it by saying, "No, all you have to do is fix it, and then it's perfectly good building that you can rent out, and it meets our requirements, and, you know, you can use it," then they can't prove, they can't show that there's been a taking. So it's not easy to show that there's been a taking. So if there are no more questions about that, I think we're, I think we're basically, that's pretty much it for, I will say on page 10, in case anyone's asking, we, under the historic, maybe it's not page 10, but, under historic districts, there was some kind of confusing language about what it meant to be in a historic district, and we deleted that confusing language. What it now means to be in a historic district is what we've talked about earlier, which is if you're a property in a historic district, you're subject to all these, you've got to get a COA if you want to do something. You've got to get approval if you want to demolish the building. So that's it for chapter 38. So I guess what I'm hearing is that what you'd like to do is send this back to landmarks with those suggested changes, there's only a couple of them, and I guess Peggy, do you feel like I should come to that meeting, or do you feel like you, this is something that you can handle with them on your own? There's only, there's only those two things, really. Definition of local district and that additional standard for demolition.
Yeah, I would say if you could just forward that information to us, and we can look at it, and if, for some reason, um-
I can give you my phone number, you can call me if you have a question.
They're struggling with it, you know, we can address it, since there is no real-
There's no big rush.
Yeah.
Right.
We can always circle back if, if necessary, but I don't think it'll be necessary, I think you could just forward the language to us and we can look at it.
So let me just, procedurally then, let's say we do that, I send it back to landmarks, they look at it, let's say they make some changes, and then they adopt a new motion to recommend the revised act to the city council, does it need to come back here again? You guys don't want to see it again?
No.
Sounds good, okay, it'll just go to council. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Before we go to chapter 78, I need to go to the bathroom.
And I know that Matt Bartlett needs to, needs to go as well, but we'll, why don't we take just a quick, maybe five-minute break?
Okay.
Be back, thank you.
All right.
Is there a [inaudible] 78 that shows changes?
Online as well.
What's your charge for a phone call?
I hear you.
How much is my charge? Yeah, online. Is there a minimum, like it's an hour?
Six-minute increments.
Six minutes.
So if I'm on the phone for two minutes, I charge you for six.
So might as well just chat, right?
We all went to landmarks last Thursday.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring us back together so that we can continue to discuss Section 78-517.
Okay, thank you for the break. Are we ready to move along?
We are. Just as a reminder to commissioners, the latest version is online. Or is it the same as the one we had?
Well, no, we did make a few changes Thursday night.
And it also doesn't tell us where, what was there originally.
So, yeah, let me back up a little bit, because just so you understand what you're looking at. We had two sections of the ordinances before, 78-517 and 78-913. Landmarks recommended consolidating everything into one section, number one. So we no longer have, they're recommending repealing 78-913 in its entirety. The changes now to 78-517 are so extensive that it doesn't make any sense to try and show them to you in a redline format, because it would be so much noise that you wouldn't even be able to make sense of it. If you, so here, if you really want to see what's different between what the ordinance is today and what this is, there's two ways we can go about doing that. One way is you could just have the existing 517 and 913 available, and you can look at those, and then you could look at this. In my mind, that's the easiest thing to do. If you guys want me to try and put together some kind of a redline draft, I can do that, but I honestly don't think it's going to be helpful to you, because it's going to just be so much noise in terms of the way it looks. It's going to be very difficult to work with. So, that's what we've got. So this is just a clean, new, so it would be repealing Chapter 78-913 entirely, repealing and recreating 78-517. And it's a pretty new, it's in some ways, so certainly a lot shorter, and I think in some ways much more straightforward than what we have now. But why don't we just go through it, so you can see what it is? So, first, let's talk about the definitions. Because we've got these different categories. You can see maintenance, renovation, structural project, demolition. Those are the four different categories of things that could happen in this district as this ordinance defines them. And each of these different categories is subject to its own review process. Maintenance is defined, let's go back up to maintenance. Maintenance means work involving maintaining the existing, let's get rid of that comma, the existing exterior appearance of a building or structure such as repainting, re-roofing, reciding, or replacing with the same colors, finishes, and materials. So, it's the same, you're not changing anything. And we'll get to what the standard is for maintenance in a minute. Renovation means work that involves a change in the appearance of a building or structure such as painting, roofing, siding, architectural component substitution, fencing, paving, or signage with different colors, finishes, or materials. Structural project means work involving modification to the physical configuration of an existing building or structure such as grading, the erection of a new building or structure, or the addition or removal of a bulk to an existing building or structure. And then finally, we have demolition, which means the raising or destruction entirely or in significant part of a building or structure, and includes the removal or destruction of any facade of a building or structure. So those are the four different kinds of things that someone might want to do in this downtown design overlay zoning district. That's how they're defined. You see, we've also got a definition of design guidelines, because we use those now in this ordinance. That's what this booklet is. These were, as I understand it, adopted specifically for this area. And then we've got a definition of development agreement, which is defined to mean an agreement that requires an owner to construct a new building or structure that is replacing an existing building or structure in the district within a reasonable time. And you'll see why that definition is there in a minute. Yes?
If I could just jump up to purpose there for a second?
Yeah.
I noticed that historical is still listed in purpose. And I know, I had an opportunity to participate in a meeting with the Landmarks Commission, and we had discussed the issue that historical within the context of 78 is part of what was causing the confusion with local historic district landmarks. So I'm kind of surprised that that's still here. And I think in your slideshow, you had taken that out and focused on enhancing the aesthetic qualities of downtown, retaining very visually pleasing image, those kinds of things. So, was it a conscious choice to leave historical in here again? Because...
Yes, I'll tell you what my recollection is. I think the Landmarks Commission did talk about this, I think from their perspective. And I don't want to speak for them, just my memory is. They do see the historical features or the historical character of the downtown as significant and part of the purpose. You could come to a different conclusion. One of the things we also talked about is the notion that the Landmarks Commission has the ability to use Chapter 38 to designate areas as locally designated districts and afford that level of protection to them. And, so that's another way that the city might go about protecting the historical character of the city. So there was some discussion. I'm doing my best to be fair to what it was. I understand your point as well, and I think it's up to you all at this point to have a conversation about that issue and decide what you want to do with it. Is it only, you know, what's the purpose of this district? And the purpose statement tends to be, usually it's not the most important element of an ordinance in terms of dictating outcomes, but certainly people can use it to argue for a particular outcome.
Everything else needs to relate back to that, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a reason, it's a purpose, why are we doing this? And so I guess it's a point that you all should probably discuss.
For me, I know we always talk about our historical downtown, so to me, that word is important to be in there, but all to present true.
Just an overriding comment. One, we don't apparently have the most current version. Two, I would like to see what staff, you know, what you guys think of what's being proposed. I mean, this is coming from Landmarks, it's not coming from us. So I'm struggling with even going through this tonight on some level. And I'm not trying to throw a monkey around, but this is so backwards to the way we normally do things.
I think, reflecting back on the direction, I think the city attorney was directed to reconcile the differences between 38 and 78. And working with the Landmarks, I think that was the council directive. We've been participating as staff at the meetings and observing the process. I don't know, are you looking for us to say this is suitable for change at this point, or?
On some level, yes. Like I said, I mean, back to Matt's comment, you know, and Mike and I were just looking online, you know, what we've got existing. You know, it appears that a lot of what was in there were some of the design standards in terms of the existing ordinance and some of the references. You know, now it appears we're cleaning it up by referencing this document and going through. But I don't know what the, you know, what the additional implication of this proposed change. The focus, my belief, and again, Commissioner Barman and I had the opportunity to join Landmarks and offer some suggestions and talk about things as a part of it. Clearly, from my perspective, this all grew out of the whole demolition discussion. But I don't understand, I don't pretend to know what other implications these changes are to talk more than just demolition.
Can I speak to that? So I think there are the two things that are really different from a substantive standpoint here. One is procedural. You may recall that there were a lot of questions about what is the procedure?
Right.
Okay, so I can speak to, this tries to set forth very clearly what the process should be for each kind of project, number one. So there are changes there substantively. Number two, this, we didn't, the Landmarks Commission, with respect to maintenance, renovation, and structural projects, they had different names before. It was called, there were different names, but they're essentially the same thing. They didn't really, as I recall, change the standards that apply to that other than by saying, these now are the standards that are going to, fundamentally, they said, when you're going to do one of these projects, this is the standard that we're going to apply. So that's part number two. So process, these are the standards for renovation and structural projects. And then finally, demolition. How should demolition be handled? Those were the things that they worked on. And again, it's now, a lot of the pages here are just application requirements, which haven't changed much. So the things that were required in an application before are still basically the things that are required. So the substantive stuff, I mean, I can go through it with you, and you can see where it is. And I can, as we go, I can tell you, I can try to tell you where it's different from what you have on the books today, if that would help you.
This process sucks. This should not be before us in this manner tonight. You can do, Commissioner can do what you choose, but I'm definitely not pleased with kind of getting something dropped on us from this standpoint. And I did try and go through it, but I did not go back and compare it to the other existing ordinance.
What would help, do you want a redline?
The other folks decide what they want to do.
And I could give you a redline.
Maybe it would help, it would mean, it's the same question Matt asked before he laughed, is what's our end goal tonight? Is it just to get our process, get the commission aware of how far this has gone? Or are we making, are we making an action or taking an action on this tonight?
No action tonight.
Okay, so this is the start of a process.
Yeah, here's what I see the process going forward. The commission has to spend whatever time the commission wants to spend to get to a point where you're comfortable having a public hearing on something. If you get there tonight, fine, you can say, well, let's have a public hearing at our next meeting. If you say, no, we still have work to do, you keep working until you decide you're comfortable, you have a draft that you'd like to schedule a public hearing on. Once you're there, we'll have a public hearing, you'll get public input, and then you'll decide, are you good with it still? You ready to vote on it and make a recommendation to council, or do you need to spend more time on it? So there's no, you're not being asked to vote on anything tonight. You're being asked to start work on it.
Commissioner Han?
Sure. I mean, I think it'd be helpful, I mean, I could probably look it up, but helpful to have the current, I mean, not necessarily you have to go in redline, because what, you basically redline all of 913, it's all red.
Yep.
And 517 gets new, old, and gets cut up, right?
I can give that to you. Again, I think it's going to be...
But I guess what would be beneficial is to see what we're changing from. What we don't, what I don't have, without going back and/or even understanding that 913 is not, you know, just from what I get in a packet, it'd be helpful to have, that would, kind of what you're saying, Scott? It'd be nice to have reference of what we're scratching, of what we're bringing?
The Landmarks Committee, Commission has spent months working on this with their input and trying to understand what's up. And we're being handed now their proposed changes without any background from our standpoint. We never went back through and said, here are things that we believe are troubling with this section. We're aware that from a council standpoint and from the city attorney, that there were conflicts between Section 38 and 78. But so, so there's just, it's, and Matt began the discussion by saying, we don't have to do anything with 38, but 78 is the one that's going to need a public hearing, and we need to move quickly because we've got someone that's hanging out there. And that's, and so that's...
It was formulated by Landmarks, but not voted on by Landmarks either. There's no, I mean, I guess this is the recommendation, but no action.
Well, effectively, this is...
They did not recommend this, they, but they...
But they created it.
Yes, and I was following what I thought the direction was, which was go to Landmarks and start there. So if you, if you want...
So they did everything short of saying, yes, we recommend this, because this is a draft that has come out of the discussion between that commission and city attorney, so.
So I'm happy to start over with you guys. I mean, I could say, we could do, because what we did with the Landmarks Commission, what I did was, first, we went through and tried to identify, what are the questions? What are the concerns? What are the issues? What are the options then, that you might want to consider for dealing with those? And step three was, okay, let's start drafting language. And if that's the process you guys want to use, I'm fine with that, or you'd like to do.
I guess, I mean, there's a lot of work and there's a lot of effort put into this, and that's appreciated. What I don't have is, what am I referencing this to? What are we changing from? What are we getting rid of? Is there anything in there that I would say, well, coming from a perspective of being on the commission or seeing something that's actually important? You know, maybe we don't want to scrap that, or maybe we want to add language here or there and use the work that we're actually currently using. And then, you know, maybe, just having more information to piecemeal, look at, well, actually, I remember something came up about this, or whatever, and that's relevant to have in here, something like, you know, I guess just trying to pull examples.
So here, let me just list some different options that you might take to this, different approaches. One approach would be, you guys all read the existing ordinances and then read this, and now you have some understanding of what the differences are. Another would be, you say to me, give me a redline draft, and I'll do that. And you can do that kind of review process, looking at a redline draft. Another process might be to say, we don't want to look at this draft that Landmarks did. We want to start over and go through our own process of trying to identify what the things are that we don't like with our current ordinance, and what issues we want to work on, and start kind of at that point. Those, and there may be other approaches. Again, I'll do however you guys want to do it.
I would offer one more, and that is, back to what I just said a minute, a few minutes ago. What I would like at a minimum is for our staff to take a look at this and for you guys to go through, and let us know based on the actual application and what you guys have seen over time, if you've participated or at least been aware of it. I, at the end of the day, just as Michael and I were saying, you know, we ought to be looking to Peggy to be the staff person for Landmarks and tell us what's going on. She has to take things. I'm looking to you guys for direction. And again, I understand where this came from and what Matt's charge was. But I think it's, the disconnect for me is, it's another body effectively telling us how we should be operating based on some other changes that they're making, and then Matt trying to clean up some of the inconsistencies. I'd like to know what you guys think. And if you take a look at this and say, this is wonderful, it's great, it solves all the issues, then I'm going to feel a whole lot more comfortable. But short of that, I don't necessarily, you know, I wouldn't advise, you know, spending the time and the money to have Matt go through and do a redline. We just, when I looked through it, and I opened it up in the packet and read through it, I looked at, I had the redline on the one side, and I'm like, okay, I get what's being changed. I looked at this, and I didn't have the section available to me, and I went, what are we doing? So to Matt's point too, again, we don't have a frame of reference as to what's being changed and why. And so I would ask you guys to be able to do that, and at least give us some input.
Well, here's another thing I could do. It would take some time.
Stop for a second.
Yeah, I would say, I would, yeah, definitely have your eyes on it, your recommendations on it, and have us have the ability to review. So a combo of those two options. But I don't think it's necessary for you to go through and redline something that, you know, basically what I'm going to do is go through the old ones, circle all the stuff that I find, you know, you know, do a cross-reference, and then circle the things that I see, like, well, I didn't see that in the new one, but I think it should be added, and then figure out where it should slot in. But, you know, not to the point where I'd need a full redline to down to the word, like this, to this, to this. You know, that'd be tedious and, you know, it'd be billing us for many six-hour intervals, so. Mike?
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, I mean, in addition to what Scott has just said, I would like to have Matt just give us a synopsis of what...
Kind of an overview?
Overview of what changes were made to get to where we are here, so we understand, based on what the council was asking us to do. That's what I'd like to hear.
I think that would help. I could do a memo that provides that kind of synopsis. Here are the big differences between what the ordinance is today and what, at least what this is.
Thank you, Commissioner Barman.
If it helps, I mean, Scott and I were both at the meeting, and Peggy's still in the room. I mean, I could, there's like three or four things that I see as being kind of fundamental shifts that the commission might be, it might help the commission, the rest of the commissioners know at least some of the thought processes that were behind it. Not only that purpose statement, which is why I started there, but the fact that demolition has been pulled out as a separate section because it was lost underneath structural changes. So there's some basic things like that, that Scott and I could just draw attention to some of the issues that were identified. And then I fully agree with the idea, I honestly, I think what's here is a good place to start. I mean, I think what they've done is good, but we do lose the context of knowing what the other two ordinances were originally, except for memory. And I certainly would love to see staff input on it. But I don't think this is necessarily a bad place to have the discussion around. So I mean, if you guys want, I can run through just a few things that I see. Okay, number one, I think the purpose statement was really important, I remember from our discussions, because that was considered to be one of the fundamental conflicts that was arising between people who were, whose properties were within the downtown overlay district, and were trying to figure out how decisions, and we as a commission, were trying to figure how to make decisions based on Section 78, and how that related to the historic status because they were on the national or state register. And what was causing confusion in interpretation and application of 78 was the fact that you had national and state designation of the districts, not local designation. And we had within this perfect, the purpose statement, this historic statement. And yet, you read through all the rest of the ordinance, both the old 78 and the new 78, there aren't any further reference to or application of historic quality. It's all falls back to design quality or aesthetic quality. And so I think that's where, I think, we really, as much as I'm a historic preservationist myself, I'd love, I would love to see the downtown overlay district be a local historic district or historic district local. The fact is, it isn't now. That's not what 78 is. And by throwing historic in there, I think it gives people false perception that it's going to protect historic structures, which it's not. And I think leads them to think that they don't necessarily have to do other things to protect those historic structures. And so I think just being clear from that perspective makes sense. So that was one big issue, was having a conversation about that purpose statement and the difference between the two. The other is, I think between those two sections, and the reason why the effort was made to merge them is because there was a clear disconnect in interpretation. You have definitions in one section of 78, and then use of those terms in the other section of 78. And they weren't connected in a very strong way. So by pulling them together, you have definitions much more proximate to application. The other thing is that, and the reason you have these criteria is, now it's maintenance, renovation, and structural project, and then demolition. The criteria were much more fuzzy before in terms of the kind of change, and it was harder to determine the process and the criteria to apply to those changes. And I think was particularly problematic because of the current situation was that demolition was buried. It was kind of lost within another category, and it wasn't dealt with in a way that was appropriate. And so I think that's, you pull out that whole demolition section. So that's one of the things you'll see, is those disconnects across different definitions. And I'm still, these are improvements. I still need to kind of think about whether or not maintenance, renovation, and structural project kind of accomplish the differences between those two, but it's better. And I definitely like demolition being broken out and dealt with separately. So those are the main, the main things I saw.
And if I could just briefly add to that, the, I think the existing ordinance does not do a particularly good job of giving the plan commission a clear guidance as to what standards apply to making a decision. And so this says now, for like, for things that you're doing with an existing building, you use this. These are the standards for the design guidelines. And so that is more clear. And then the standard for demolition, which is something that I think really drove the need for this process, there's now something that's specific to demolition. And there are, in this draft at least, four different tests that someone could use to support a demolition application. We don't have anything like these tests in the current ordinance. In the current ordinance, my sense is that, well, it's very, there's no guidance that's helpful at all to decide whether to demolish a building, and what we were told by the consultant who drafted the ordinances, because he made a mistake, because it wasn't supposed to include demolition as part of project review. It was a mistake. And so that's why there's no guidance. And so this gives you guidance on demolition. And so my sense is, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever you guys want. If you want to take a break and come back after we've done a, I can do a memo that, as Mike said, kind of summarizes the changes.
I'd like to hear that right now.
Do you want to summarize the change? I can do a synopsis right now.
That's what I'd like to hear.
Okay. So, first, I want to just talk procedure, because there's procedure and there's substance. Procedurally, the standard or the process for approving an application is as follows. If it's maintenance, meaning you're not changing anything, you just go to the zoning administrator. If it's a renovation project or a structural project, well, let's start with renovation. If it's renovation, meaning you are changing something, but it's not a structural change, then that is to be approved by the plan commission. If it's a structural project, that is also to be approved by the plan commission, but the plan commission must hold a public hearing on it before making a decision. Finally, if it's demolition, this ordinance as drafted says that demolition is ultimately subject to approval by the common council, but before the council may act, the application has to be submitted to the Landmarks Commission and the Plan Commission for review and recommendation. and the plan commission for review and recommendation. So, by the way, that change was directly responsive to one of the big questions that we were asked to address, which is, should the, who should ultimately decide whether to approve demolition? And should it be the council or somebody else? So what this draft says is, for demolition, it is the council, but landmarks and plan commission both have to first make a recommendation. So procedurally now, that is very clear, I think. Whereas before, there was a lot of conflict over what's the process. Substantively, as I said, if it's renovation or structural projects, I think it's very simple. Here's your standard. You look to your design guidelines. And if they're, what they're proposing is, what it says under, look at renovation review, it says, "The plan commission shall approve an application for renovation if the applicant demonstrates that the renovation will conform with the design guidelines." Very clear. Remember what you have now, which is, "You shall consider the aesthetic and economic and whatever other qualities and features," and it's not very clear. This says, "If it conforms to these design guidelines, it shall be approved." Same is true under structural products. Shall approve if you demonstrate that this project will conform to the design guidelines. Finally, demolition. And this is where it gets a lot more complicated in my mind. What's the standard for approving demolition? If you go to the last page of this, there are now four different avenues that could lead to approval. Under 6B1, first, so someone would have to show three things. One, notwithstanding the condition of the building or structure, there's no economically viable use of the building or structure. I see you guys show that first. Second, you'd have to show that a, that a permit for construction of a new building or structure on the site has been approved and issued. And three, the owner has to enter into a development agreement with the city. And as you remember earlier, I read what development agreement means. Development agreement means an agreement that requires an owner to construct a new building or structure that is replacing an existing building or structure within a reasonable time. So if someone wants to demolish a building in the downtown design overlay zoning district under this standard, you have to show there's no economically viable use of your existing building. You have to have gone through the process necessary to get a permit to construct a new building. What does that mean? Among other things, you need to come to the plan commission and show that you're gonna build a new building that conforms to these design guidelines. Because this, that would be deemed a structural project in this overlay zoning district. So you'd have to get a building permit from the city. You'd have to get plan commission approval for a structural project. You'd have to have that in hand, all before you could get approval to demolish your building. And you'd have to sign an agreement with the city that requires you to actually construct this new building within a reasonable time. So that's number one. That's option number one you have as a property owner. Option two, here's your standards. One, you'd have to show the building or structure is not in good repair. So remember, the first standard is, we don't care whether the structure's in good repair or not. This is the standard. Now, section two, you could say, if you could show that the structure or building is not in good repair, number one. Number two, the cost of repairing the building or structure would exceed eighty-five percent of the assessed value of the building or structure.
How come eighty-five percent? Where did that number come from?
That number came from the statutes which discuss the authority to order that a historic building be raised. And if it's a, not a historic building, if you're a building inspector and you're gonna order someone to raise a building, you're not gonna give them the option to just fix it up. You have to be able to show that the cost to repair would exceed fifty percent of assessed value. But if it's a historic structure, it's eighty-five percent. So that's where it came from. So you, here, back to property owner, you have to show your, your building is not in good repair. It would exceed eighty-five percent of the assessed value to repair it. Three, again, you have a permit for construction of a new building that's been approved and issued prior to or simultaneously. And again, to get that, you have to show you're building something that meets these standards. You have a permit for that. And three, or four, you have entered into a development agreement to build the new building. So that's, that's your second choice. Third, the building or structure through no fault of an owner, is, of an owner, is detrimental to or does not contribute to the architectural or aesthetic character of the district. And then we add a sentence that says, "Where a building or structure has been allowed to deteriorate in a manner that failed to comply with city property maintenance ordinances, such deterioration is the fault of the owner." So under three, you'd have to show, as the owner, that your building or structure is either detrimental to the architectural or aesthetic character of the district, or that it does not contribute to the architectural or aesthetic character of the district. You'd have to show that, number one. And you have to show that it's not your fault. Now, that could be because it just never did. Or it could be because there's another reason, including, you know, we talked earlier about, there's a bad fire or something like that and it no longer contributes, or it's detrimental. Or it's in bad repair, it's in really bad shape, but it's not your fault. It's not your fault because you didn't fail to comply with applicable property maintenance standards. That's not why it's in bad shape.
Matt, isn't this worded backwards? Just as I read this? I mean, again, these items, demolition shall not be approved unless the applicant demonstrates any of these things. So if we were, if, in that situation, if I'm, if I'm applying for a demolition, the last line says that such deterioration is the fault of the owner. Aren't we trying to say it's the other way, that it wasn't their fault that the building got to such a condition?
So now, if you look at that whole sentence, it says, "Where a building or structure has been allowed to deteriorate in a manner that failed to comply with city property maintenance ordinances, then such deterioration is the fault of the owner." This, what you have to show here is the first sentence. The standard is, "The building or structure through no fault of an owner is detrimental to or does not contribute to the district." Okay? That's the standard. But then there's clarifying language that says, well, what does that mean to be the fault of the owner?
Got it. Okay, yeah.
Does that make more sense now?
Yep, absolutely. I read it wrong, because I was thinking, again, this is kind of the benign neglect, that the owner just can't let it run down to the point that they can argue that it's, it's out of shape.
Well, and the point is, you could let it run into the ground, so long as you were not violating city property maintenance ordinances in doing that.
Got it.
Remember I said earlier, we don't have particularly good property maintenance ordinances right now, except for in historic districts or for landmark sites. There are some standards, but they're not great. So if the owner could show, building is in complete disrepair, does not contribute to the district, and show that the kind of problems that the building is experiencing are not the result of a failure to comply with our ordinances, they could meet this standard. My suspicion is that this is gonna be the standard that people are gonna focus on if they're considering applying for demolition. So you have to think carefully about whether you're satisfied with how this is put together. Yeah.
Does it take into consideration previous owners? I know we talked about that in 38.
This, yeah, this says, "Through no fault of an owner." Now, if you wanna be more clear about that, you know, if you wanna say, "No fault of the current or any prior owner." My intent was to capture any owner, but if you'd like that to be a little more-
Astute present.
Yeah. And I would encourage all of you to look at the city's current property maintenance standards, to see what you think of them, to see, well, how would that factor into this analysis? Because again, I don't think they're that great.
Basically, no, no building's gonna get demoed because nobody's gonna be able to meet the standard. That's the way I read it.
One or two would be real tough, three might be real tough. They're all, these are very tough standards to meet. That's true.
Yeah, but, I mean, effectively, what it says is that no, no building is gonna be demoed without a replacement plan. We're not gonna have a situation where we're taking something down and hoping that sometime in the future, somebody's gonna do something.
So blighted properties will stay blighted because no one's gonna wanna redevelop them or, and they're not gonna be allowed to demo them. Makes no sense to me.
Well, here, there's two, under items one and two, seems to me there's really two critical things that an owner has to show. One is, there's a major, there's a, there's a major problem with the existing building. Either there's no economically viable use of that existing building, or it's in such bad repair that the cost to fix it would exceed eighty-five percent of the value. So under, under one or two, to get approval, you have to show there is one of those two problems with that building.
What Todd's, I think what Todd is saying though is, one and two both continue to say, "And."
Yeah.
And.
And, so, my point is, so you gotta show one of those two things. I got a major problem with my building. I either, it's, there's no viable use for it, or it's hugely in need of repair, very expensive. And, you have to show, "And I have approval to build a new building to replace it. I've got a building permit and approval to replace it. And I've signed an agreement with the city that says I'm gonna build a new building within a reasonable time." That's the standard that they've developed or recommended.
So two, two questions. So before you even have any approval of demolition, you need to go and develop plans, get a permit approved, get a signed agreement, and then come before the commission and we say no, then you're done.
Draw out all that money.
You know, so you have to do all this homework. Why, so why, I guess, the intent when putting this together, what was the point of having to have a new building or structure built? Because I see there's certain, I understand, I think demolition would be a lot harder in a lot of these blocks that are shared walls, right? But there are certain buildings that are standalone in here that don't necessarily, I mean, they don't necessarily need to be rebuilt. And it might not even be in the best interest of the city to have something rebuilt on such, say, some of these small lots to have, you know, to serve the city, you know, for whatever use is gonna be put there. I guess, maybe the question is, what was the thought process behind this, having to have all these requirements even before a demolition permit? And then the, also the requirement of construction of a new building or structure?
So the landmarks commission spent a lot of time talking about this. There were a lot of thoughts that were discussed. I'll tell you what I told them. I said, "I don't think you need this." Because I think if somebody owns property on Main Street in this area, they're going to make a decision that makes economic sense. And if they take down a building, chances are, they're not gonna leave that site vacant forever. They're probably gonna put a new building up at some point. And when they do, they're gonna have to come in and get approval of their building and meet the design guidelines. That was not the view that prevailed at the landmarks commission. I mean, that was my personal opinion. Their opinion, and again, it's a little risky to speak for them, but I'll tell you, do the best I can.
Yeah.
They wanna know that there's gonna be a building there and that it's gonna be there kinda sooner rather than later, I guess. And they were, I guess, unwilling to take the chance that a building, a lot might sit vacant for, you know, what they would consider to be too long. And so that was, to my understanding, that was their process. That was their thought process.
Sure. Old person, Engelberger, and then Barman.
Is this, my understanding is, this is only for, is not for every building within the overlay district, is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not the way I understood it to be. What I understood it to be was historic buildings within the overlay district. So that's not the case here.
Yep.
Commissioner Barman?
Yeah, I, I think in addition to-
It's a question. I'm waiting for an answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Michael.
Oh, no, this applies to-
I thought you had the answer.
This applies to every building in that district.
I'm not so sure that's what the council was looking for.
Okay. Now I'll go on to Mr. Barman.
I'll do two things. One is, to address the first question, it's, it's not just a desire of the, I don't think it's just a desire to have property owners put a new building. I think it goes back to the, the design guidelines that are in place. And a big part of the design, the design guidelines are intact street walls. I mean, you're talking about the overall aesthetic, the overall functioning of the downtown overlay district. A big part of that is having intact, intact street wall, zero setback buildings, not having a lot of-
Gaps.
Gaps. And so the, the, in the desire to pursue these guidelines, which is the fundamental tenet of the, of Section 78, the way it's written currently here in this rewrite, is to abide by the guidelines. And it's not just for new construction. It's as you evaluate removal of a building that's going to create a big gap along the street. And so I think that's part of the reason why it's in there. I think, in addition, to answer your question, Mike, that that goes back to that whole purpose statement. And the confusion over being able to evaluate historic or not historic in the overlay district, when that's not what this ordinance was created for. And it's creating confusion with the, the, Section 38 and all the work that the landmarks commission is doing by mudding that overlap between the two. And so that's why this was written, to apply to every building within the district and not using historic status as a criteria.
And I'm sorry, there is something important that I had forgotten about that I need to mention. Actually, the way this is drafted, this section applies to every building or improvement in the district unless it's a locally designated landmark, or, or if it's in a locally designated landmark district. In which case, this doesn't apply and now Chapter 38 would apply. So this applies to everything in the district that's not a locally designated landmark. But the, at least what the landmarks commission thought was, if it's a landmark structure, this shouldn't apply. Instead, the Chapter 38 process should There was no discussion that I recall at the landmarks commission about like a third category, where you'd have, in this district, local landmarks, that's Chapter 38, and then the rest of the district trying to have two categories. Some buildings this process applies to and some it doesn't. So there was no discussion about trying to further divide buildings within the district.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could see that being a possibility, is, you know, standalone buildings or, you know, maybe an end cap building that could be, you know, demolished, something like that to avoid having gaps. But, you know, it's, I know the district is overlay, which basically says all of this. But, yeah, I mean, I, from a planning perspective, to have a limit, to limit the ability for larger vision or development thought is limiting long-term in a, in a, in a planning perspective, I would say, than to say, well, I guess you're just looking at specific parcels, which I suppose you would in a, in a demolition. But, I mean, if I'm looking at economic viability, then, then I could look at it as a planner and see, well, yes, that property has value, not, maybe not currently as it stands. So it either needs to be rehabbed and fixed, or I see it has potential for this vision or another plan that could be in place, you know. That's where I have a hard time with it, where you're forcing a hand like, well, if you wanna get rid of it, then you basically have to have something similar to it that, at one point, it failed once. So you need to try to do it again with a new thought or plan or whatever, you know. And every building has their history of why it didn't work or did work, or some owner down the road that has now completely ruined it for anybody else and the city to any current or future owner because of fifty to a hundred years ago, they decided that they didn't care. So I, I think there's a huge limitation with this to use sound judgment. So, I, I think there's a huge limitation with this to use sound judgment, you know? It seems very constricting to, it's basically, you either do this or you can't. I mean, you're going to do it this way, and that's the only way we're going to look at it, and that's it. There's no any foresight or thought of, "Okay, I understand what, what you're thinking. We never thought of that. That makes sense. That'd be great for the district. You're still having the intent of doing something like this or, you know, redeveloping." So, I guess I have a lot of problems with, I mean, not problems, but just concern over how this is worded and how it's real tunneled, like, "This is how you're going to do it, and there's no other option." Although there are options in here, the end game is the same, you know, it's just how to get to it. Unrelated to what I was just talking about, but let's say, so, we talked about the raise order in thirty-eight, and that would be granted by courts. Do you see putting anything like that in this demolition section?
There is also an exception in here for raise order.
Item four.
And right at the very beginning of it, isn't there?
Yeah. If you look under application of regulations, top of page two, does not apply to a local landmark, does not apply to a structure that's been ordered raised under, and they're actually, this, this actually is a little more expansive, I think. This doesn't apply to the demolition of a structure that's been ordered raised either by a court or by the building inspector. So, now, the building inspector cannot order a building to be raised. It's, I have to be careful with this. It may be the case that in this district, you've got to get to eighty-five percent of assessed value for cost before you could order the owner to raise it. So, so, you know, again, these, this was, this question of what to do with demolition was the big question, and this is what they came up with.
So, for tonight, we don't necessarily have to solve this.
Nope.
But that's where you see the specific, those are, those are the areas which I think our attention's going to be. And I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm less uncomfortable with it than I think Matt and Todd are, but it's, I think it might be, you know, I think there's probably ways to look at it with maybe not necessarily focusing on just a permit for the construction of a new building or structure if they have approval for a site plan, but then you have to be careful because that's what the criteria was in our current situation, and we had all those go-rounds about what's a qualified site plan and what's a, and so, but we can, we can certainly, we can play with verbiage such as that to have it not just maybe only buildings, but maybe site plans, or especially if it's a site, site plan that is consistent with a downtown master plan or a, something that lays out a broader vision for areas that either encompass the entirety or parts of the overlay district. Because I get what you're saying, Matt, but I think, I hate to leave the door open for abuse just because you're trying to maybe leave the door open for one really good project if there's other ways to allow for that really good project to happen.
What if it says something about future development within so many, I mean, within a certain timeframe? Just as a-
I know we discussed that in the meeting I was able to attend, and one of the issues that came up with is, once the building's gone, it's gone. And so, it's one thing to promise, "I'll, I'll put a building up. Let me tear the building down." And we'll say, "Okay," then the building's gone without anything more than that, then, then I've accomplished what I want, and now, I've got you in a place where you can't bring the building back. I can't say, "Oops, I was just kidding." And so, that's, that was the reason behind having it still a bit more clear in terms of having already had approval. And Scott brought up the issue that that's used in other parts of the community where you have, in fact, it was an earlier agenda item for tonight, where you have a situation where site plans are in agreements with the city are already in place in advance of other kinds of work. So, there's already a precedent for that.
All right.
Yeah, so, let's say you have a development agreement that you have to get approved with the city, and that has, you know, kind of like some of the other developments we've done, a guaranteed improved value, you know, and you need to be bonded for that amount or whatever it is, you know, so, you, I think you could craft that in maybe development agreement of what the expectations are.
Well, as I, as I understand this language, the only thing that the development agreement has to do, that I'd be comfortable saying you have to agree to, is you have to agree to put up the new building that you've had a, that you've got a permit for within a reasonable time. So, the only question is, what's a reasonable time? And we're not going to be talking about value or anything else unless they're asking for TIF money, and then that becomes part of the discussion. But at least under this framework, the only thing I would be comfortable saying you have to agree to, as, as the applicant here is, to build the building, and what's the timeframe? And then, reasonable time, we talked about time, and that's something that I think the council and the applicant will have to negotiate under the facts of the particular case. Maybe they could come in and make the case that, "I need two years to do this," or eighteen months, or three years, or whatever. There's some flexibility there. It's not clearly specified. So, as I see the decision tree for the Plan Commission and the council on this question of demolition, so, the first question is, should you require to, someone to get approval to demolish a building in this district or not? The second, if the answer is yes, then the question is, well, should that be for all buildings, or are there some buildings where that just shouldn't be required? And that's the, you guys seem to think that maybe there's a question there. The third question is, for those buildings where you do want to require them to get approval, how will you decide? What standard will govern that decision? To me, those are the three. The way it's drafted right now, yes, you've got to get approval. You've got to get approval for every building. If it's a local landmark, they go to Landmarks Commission, and you guys already know what that means. That means they've got to meet their standard. If it's not a local landmark, they could, they would come here and ultimately to the city council to get approval. And then finally, here's the standards we've got right now. So, you guys could, you need to, I think, go through all three of those. Should we require approval? Should it be for everything or just some things and not others? And what should the standard be?
It'll, and no matter what, it'll always go to Landmarks, too.
No. Landmark, they decided that landmarks, as I recall, oh, that, no, that's true, demolition, they get to weigh in on it.
Yeah.
The way this is drafted.
Right.
Now, you and/or the city council may disagree with that.
I just want clarification.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right. That's the only thing that Landmarks looks at under chapter seventy-eight, I think. Now, I think they took themselves out of looking at any of the other kinds of review under this chapter, unless it's a locally designated landmark, in which case, you guys are not involved and they are. But for demolition, like, everybody's involved. Landmarks gets to weigh in, you get to weigh in, council makes the final decision. Yeah.
I guess then, my question goes back to what we were talking about, purpose, is that this isn't a historic district, and Landmarks deals with historic preservation and historic buildings. So, if this isn't a historic district, and if it's kind of irrelevant to historical nature, why this district, you know, it goes back to that purpose statement of it historical, so, why, I mean, I don't disagree with, with Landmarks reviewing it, but I think then you get into another conflict of, well, but if it's not really, we're not going to talk about historical here because it's in thirty-eight, but then we're going to all of a sudden reference landmarks in demolition, then it's, then, then it doesn't really tie back to the purpose if we remove historical.
Well, it's not up to me, but if it were up to me, it would be going to one body that would make a decision based on the standard of the ordinance, and that would be it.
Yeah.
But that's not how this is set up.
Commissioner Tru.
And that's really, again, that's kind of back to kind of a fundamental, Commissioner Barman and I went and met and offered some suggestions. From that point to what, what I see before me, there were significant changes and additional restrictions and things. For me personally, my objective was to indicate that on, on the whole historical, basically the, the section thirty-eight, we want very little to do with that. That's them. With regard to this, I felt two things. One, the decision that ultimately a demo permit should go to council was really what I thought was probably most important. Having said that, then the opportunity for both of us to contribute our thoughts and opinions on, on a building seemed reasonable, you know, to ask Landmarks what, what they think about taking something down, as we would, too. But then it gets back to, you know, an elected body that's, that's dealing with it. I have made the comment, and I hope I didn't overstate it from, on your behalf, but I basically said, "Look, I didn't see this commission feeling like we were going to live and die that we should always be the last authority on, on a demolition permit." But I think we ought to have a lot of input as to what the next project looks like and some of those types of things, and that, that's consistent with who we are. I do have some troubles with, to Todd's point, I mean, we basically are locking in potentially a blighted building and taking away an option of somebody doing something. I think Landmarks concern is really that, that element of, you know, as, as Todd had said, too, that we, I think they wanted to make sure that they weren't in a situation where we were taking down a building and not knowing what the plan is.
Losing history.
Right. And, well, but even history, but even, even, perhaps even less than that, just what our, what our Main Street looks like, you know, and having an architectural thing. We have, this evening, we had, we had our net spokes coming in basically asking for an opinion, getting input. We have done that on, on individual projects, you know, have people come in with concepts and get, get, let us give an opportunity to offer some thoughts as to whether it's something we would encourage them to move forward on. This is, I have a challenge with this. I think this is too restrictive. It's one thing to say, "Hey, we're looking for," you know, we, to me, it'd be reasonable for, for an owner of a piece of property to come to council and say, "I want to take the building down. It's in bad shape. Here's what's up. Here's my intent," and do some things, but you were raising the important part.
I mean, yeah, similar to-
Everything else isn't going to be put in place, and that the very last thing is-
Yes, it's, it's similar to what we're doing with Mr. Nelson and, you know, or like the marathon site, "Well, yeah, we'll work with you. We'll change your zoning, we'll take some exemptions, we'll even look at our setbacks on Main Street," you know, like, based on the zoning code. So, you know, it just made sense. It was logical. And, yeah, I agree with you, it doesn't, it doesn't really allow a whole lot of flexibility to apply any visionary logic, I guess, for the betterment of the city and our downtown. So, yeah, I would agree. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Barman.
Yeah, just, I know we're getting late, just one last comment on, on demolition, demolition section again, one and two there. One of the things I would be concerned with is burden of proof in the sense that when you set the criteria as being there's no economically viable use or eighty-five percent of assessed value, is it, are we putting the burden of proof on them that they've got to come in with a study, with a, you know, consultant report on what the costs will be, or are they just going to come in and say, "It's going to cost too much," and now it falls on us as a commission-
Right.
-to say, "No, you're wrong. We think there is an economically viable use." You know, so, I think it's going to be a little bit problematic there in terms of-
Can I speak to that briefly?
Yeah, please.
Because that's a really difficult problem to solve, in a sense. So, the way the language is drafted, they would, they would have, the burden would be on them to, you know, present evidence to support their position.
Uh-huh.
But there's been a recent change in Wisconsin law that applies not only to conditional use permits to, but to other situations in which someone is, has to request permission to do something, and I think it would probably apply here as well. So, the, the things that make me a little nervous about how this is going to go and that are kind of in keeping with your question are as follows. One, you're going to have to base your decision on the evidence presented at the hearing. So, if the only one presenting any information is the applicant, that's the whole record. So, yes, they have the burden of proof, but there isn't necessarily somebody else out there independently researching the question and prepared to make the counter case, number one. Be aware of that. So, who knows what the record's going to look like? Number two, the law now says, under this new legislation, that in defining evidence that you all can consider when acting on something like this, you're no longer allowed to consider testimony from citizens, for example, that is deemed to be speculative or just personal opinion? What does that mean exactly? But, believe me, it's going to be an interesting thing to see how that plays out because you all have been at public hearings on things, and you know what happens. You get a lot of ordinary citizens who come in and they speak to their concerns about something, but they may not do so in a way that would necessarily meet this evidentiary standard. And then, finally, after all of that, you guys are all going to have to make a decision. And what my job will be, as a city attorney, is to say to you, "Here's your decision. You have to base this decision on the legal standard of the ordinance, the evidence submitted at the hearing, and the only evidence you consider, can consider is the evidence that qualifies as evidence under the law, and then you'll have to figure out, well, what is that?" So, and that's one of the reasons that I would rather not have to go three places to do this. What is this going to look like? So, first, we're going to go to Landmarks Commission and say, "Make your case there. Get a recommendation out of there. Then come to the Plan Commission. Make your case there." By the way, in each of those cases, all those problems I just described, we're going to have to deal with. What's the nature of the proceeding? What's the evidence? How do they make the decision? What's the standard? And then finally, we'll go do it again at the city council. So, in my view, that's pretty complicated. So, if it were up to me, I'd say, go one place, have one process that results in a decision, so that you only have to do this one time. It's not going to be easy. And by the way, it's not a problem with just this. I, in my view, we're going to have to kind of rethink our conditional use permit process more broadly for the same reason, because the change in the law is going to make it harder.
Yeah, and again, this should get back to our, our discussion the evening that we were part of their committee. I basically was saying, I think it's important to get their, if, to make Landmarks aware if a, if a demo is proposing or anything, but it was still coming back, you know, kind of giving them an opportunity to make comments to us and do it, but then it's still, again, we weren't the final authority. It still gave us a chance to go to-
Right. So, if it's just a recommendation, is that different? We're not making a decision, we're just-
How do they make a recommendation without applying the legal standard of the ordinance, having evidence to support whatever recommendation they make? I, if I'm the applicant and I'm, or I'm the city attorney, I'm thinking, "Well, I mean, you can't just make a recommendation up out of thin air. You've got to have the process." I would expect to say, send the application to each body, you tell the applicant, "You get to come, you get to make your case." I would expect that you'd have to say to others who want to weigh in, "Yeah, you better listen to them, too." You have to have, I mean, how else is it going to work? I don't know how else it could work.
Another quick question, Scott, just for clarification. I think my biggest issue with these would be the second half of all these. I mean, the first classifications or qualifications, I guess, seem to be, for lack of a better term, legit. I mean, I agree with those, but just the, the requirement to do, you know, the development agreement of the str, building structure, is that kind of, are you on the same page?
Yeah.
Well, we've had some good conversation tonight, some good discussion about chapter thirty-eight, and that resulted in, and thank you for Peggy, to Peggy for coming and participating in our conversation. Matt is going to put together his thoughts on what those changes were.
Do you still want a memo from me, or has the discussion tonight addressed that concern?
Well, I think the memo was to go to Landmarks.
Oh, I'm just going to send Landmarks, chapter thirty-eight.
Yes, chapter thirty-eight.
I was talking about, earlier, there was a discussion about maybe wanting me to describe a, describe or summarize the differences between the existing chapter seventy-eight and this.
I hadn't gotten that for you.
I'm sorry.
I was still on thirty-eight.
All right, so, stay with thirty-eight.
You're, you're having me.
Yep.
So, that was with, with chapter thirty-eight.
Yep.
Landmarks will then review the recommendations made by Plan Commission, and that will go on to council for review and approval, and that's chapter thirty-eight.
Yep.
So, chapter seventy-eight, again, we've had a good discussion about it. We talked, at, at one point, you're right, there was a discussion about having Matt put together a synopsis of what the changes are. I think we've talked through that tonight. Is it the council's- of what the changes are. I think we've talked through that tonight. Is it the councils or the council, the commissions request to still have that synopsis in writing? Nope, you're comfortable with our discussion tonight? Okay, so is it, is it your request that you take a look at what the existing ordinances are and compare that to what the proposed Chapter 78 is before you tonight, or it's on the site? So, we can have-
And then get staff-
Have Michael or someone send that to you.
But also with-
So, you can look at it, but staff will also take a look at it and let you know what their thoughts are regarding, this is better, oh, we forgot, this part, or just what their feelings might be. Okay. From Matt, then, do we need anything more from Matt? I think his work is done at this point. Leave it open, we might need you again later, but for now-
If you want me to come back, I'll come back.
I think we're good.
Eventually, remember, you have to decide on going to a public hearing.
Okay. So, we know what we're going to review then between now and our next Plan Commission meeting. Thank you.
Should I not plan to come to that meeting then?
Would you like Matt to come to our next meeting so we can talk through that a little bit more?
Yeah, what do you want me to do?
Wouldn't hurt to have him here.
Scott, do you mind giving an opinion?
I think it'd be beneficial.
What's the date of that?
12th, I believe.
February 12th.
February 12th.
Let me take a look. All right, I'll put it down. What time is that, usually 6:30?
Six.
Six o'clock. Okay.
All right, thanks, Matt. We still have one more item, so don't be going anywhere yet. Agenda item 13 is the request to approve the Listel Kirby annexation ordinance.
Recommend approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Trul, second by Kirchma, to approve or to recommend approval to come in council.
There will be a staff amendment to it for the ward designation-
Yes.
Prior to council final action, we'll have that clarified.
Comments or discussion? No? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Future agenda items, we'll talk about Chapter 78 tomorrow.
But the property you just recommended annexation, there'll be a rezoning, a CSM conditional use coming forward at your next meeting, is the intent to have that come with the February 12th meeting?
In the near term, anything else from KPW or?
Nothing that I'm aware of that needs our action at this point. I mean, the COP reconsideration type thing is before council tomorrow night. I'm not aware of anything that hasn't already been approved that we, that's on our plate right now, right there.
Michael.
Yeah, I would like to see the staff bring back a recommendation on the, like, that sign issue where double the permit fee if-
Sure.
Whatever you guys think it should be, just bring it back to us at our next meeting.
In a possible format that we could take to council.
I would say we'd have to take that to council, right?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, motion to adjourn. Well, I can't make that motion, but would you like to make that?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion by Kirchma, second by Hannah. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.